Good evening, 7:33. Sorry, be a little tardy. Just came off of adjacent softball and baseball fields watching my kids simultaneously. It was convenient, it never happens. It'll never happen again. So, welcome to the school committee meeting for May 13th, 2013. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. We'll start with the approval of minutes from last week's regular session of May 6th. You all receive them in your packets. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Can I also move? A second? The motion is a second, any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Student Communications is, the new student's name again is, isn't it Michael again?
Michael Mann.
It's a new Michael. He's maybe not coming until fall.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten, there's someone that's already been in?
Remember-
Steven introduced us.
Steven introduced us to the other-
Oh, that's right.
Michael Mann.
The match, right, during the year, but he hasn't been coming recently, so. I don't see him this evening, so we'll move on.
Perhaps he thinks he's not welcome yet, so I'll let him know.
We'll have to get a note to him. Other communications?
No.
Nothing, okay. Questions and comments from the public on a matter not on the agenda this evening? Anybody? No?
It's because everything else is on the agenda.
Everything's on the agenda, okay. Old business, election of secretary. So, as you know, last week with six members, we were split and we're not able to elect a secretary. We deferred to this week, and we still currently have six members.
If it takes.
So, I wonder if we should wait until the 7th is here. I have no indication that Paul is not going to be here. I know he is going to be here, I think he's just a little late. Maybe we should wait a few minutes until he gets here and we can come back to that, unless anyone objects. Alright, the subcommittee assignments, number seven on the agenda. You have replaces a list of the subcommittee assignments. Many of them are staying the same, some changes were necessary and some changes made sense. There's a pretty good balance, I think everybody got something they wanted, to some extent. And then there's Paul. So, we have the school councils, we have the subcommittees. I know that there is a need for policy to meet, again, to take up some ongoing business. I think that you are working on revisions to the field use application. And that's something I think you should continue, certainly. With respect to policy, in terms of what you're going to take up, you know, those directives will come generally from the administration or they might be coming from the entire group as a whole. So, we can discuss things that we want to look at from a policy standpoint as the year goes on. I know that salary negotiations we'll need to meet.
Mostly what we need is a time of day that I can forward to Peter, that he can set up some tentative dates with Jackie. So, if anybody could just let me know the time of day would be the best to start with. And we'll see if we can get some dates from which you can choose.
And, let's see, was there anything else I wanted to vote on that? I guess not. Pretty straightforward. Oh, just to mention that similar to what we did with the track project with Phase 1 of the high school fields improvement project, we had a subcommittee of sorts, three of us who essentially worked more day-to-day on the details of it and addressed things that came up to try to be a little bit more nimble because the full school committee couldn't always meet that quickly. And talked it over with a couple of people and thought that that would be a good idea to do again here. Andy, Ed and I worked to help design the concession, I think worked very well together and each brought something to the table on that and complimented each other. So, I think, I've spoken to each, Ed and Andy, and I know that they're interested in serving on this, so I thought it would make sense. And we can address a little later in the meeting kind of the mechanism for action, similar to what we did with the track project. We may need to authorize John to do certain things. We'll have to authorize this subgroup to do certain things that the full school committee won't be able to do because it won't be able to meet that frequently. But we can talk about that a little bit later on. So, that's it on subcommittees, unless anyone else has a question. Okay. Paul, we skipped over the secretary election, because we wanted to make sure that the seven of us were here. So, if we could go back to item 6.1. And what we'll do, instead of the way we did it last time, we'll do it a different way. You could just say the name of the person for whom you're voting, rather than go through each of them and say yes or no. Okay? So, we have Dennis Friedman and Andy Schaffter both running for secretary. I'll start the vote this way. Dennis Friedman.
Dennis Friedman.
Dennis Friedman.
Andy Schaffter.
Andy Schaffter.
Dennis Friedman.
Andy Schaffter.
Okay, it's four to three, congratulations Dennis.
Want some paper? It's yours.
Not at all.
Okay, 7.2, new business is to introduce newly appointed members of the leadership team. We're very pleased to have in our presence tonight newly appointed middle school principal and mathematics director.
Well, I told you a little bit about David and Derek in the agenda packet and as well I've included tonight for you resume and cover letter. So, let me start with Derek, Derek Smith, in the colorful shirt. Derek has been with us a number of years as an assistant principal at Hingham Middle School. Prior to that, when he worked in Randolph, he also served for a time as a principal and assistant principal there. We think he has wonderful skills and certainly has had a wonderful mentor all of these years and he thinks he'd like choice for this position now. We had, even though it was an internal posting only, we did have a process. We had focus groups for the middle school faculty. Ellen ran the focus groups and Ellen for parents in the evening. As well, we had a public interview where we had an appointed panel roughly running through various constituencies. And we had a good audience that night, so people had a opportunity to get to know Derek a bit more. Roger's going to be here into the summer, so plenty more time for mentoring and for collaborating and all of the transition planning that will be happening. So, we congratulate Derek. Actually, I have on my computer a message to the entire faculty. And when this meeting's over, I'll push the button and everyone will be notified about both appointments. So, welcome.
Thank you. Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
How many people applied for, I know you said you did the focus groups, how many people actually applied internally?
For the role?
Yes.
Just one.
Just one.
We had thought there could be two, maybe three, and there was one.
I think Derek's an excellent choice. I would like to say that it is your decision, but I wish, you know, I think the high school principal is a key role. Obviously, the middle school one in the future, we always consider. It might be, Derek might be here 30 years, but I do think we should always consider outside searches. And that's just my opinion, but I know it is your sole discretion and I appreciate that, but I just think that sometimes we should have, you know, wider searches. And that has no reflection on Derek. I like Derek and I'm very happy for him. It's just about the process.
Thank you. David Jewitt. Many of you know David through his track prowess and wonderful coach, lots and lots of victories for the kids and honors for Derek over the years. But Derek's turning in his coaching half for a bit and is going to lead the mathematics department. You know, we've talked a lot on this committee over the years about transitions and about succession planning and so on. You know, the last two times that we've had a department director search, we're in a unique position of being able to identify someone and through a public posting process that could work for a time with the person who is retiring. And that has been true of Derek for the last two years. Derek worked in a resource, I'm sorry, David and Derek, but a different David to Derek. David has worked with Doug Hawley for the last two years because David was, has been a resource teacher and has had, again, a wonderful opportunity to learn from a master. He has a lot of exciting plans for himself. I think both of these appointments are very popular among the faculty in the building, faculty in the math department. And so, we are thrilled to be moving in the direction of David Jewitt becoming the math department chair officially. Doug Hawley retired officially two years ago, so he's retiring from retirement, but Doug will not retire. So, we're looking forward to Doug still being in our midst in some other creative ways over the years. So, congratulations to Dave. And we will have some additional leadership changes and we will announce those in a similar way as we move by.
I expect it will be a busy summer of interviewing again.
Yeah, we had two retirements last week that were not anticipated and we had one retirement this morning that was not anticipated. So, at this point, I'm looking at hiring about 30 new folks. Obviously, we didn't get 30 new positions, but those represent retirements, people taking a full year leave of absence, people continuing a leave of absence that they started this year, and some resignations as well. And then, we have some new hired FTEs that were added as part of the budget, so it will be a busy year.
Great. 7.3 is a report from the special education working group, as you know. Was it in the spring?
Well, the idea came during the budget season.
A year ago, yeah.
Yeah, and then kind of lay quiet during the spring, but over the summer, Carol, former chair, and Laura Burns and I got together and talked a bit about how the committee might look. And ultimately, we came up with a draft and I have what I think is the final draft at your place, at least on my computer, it said final draft, but there were many iterations in the draft of the charge for that committee. And we have a membership that involves appointees by the selectmen and appointees of representatives from the school committee, a liaison, not an actual voting member, but a liaison from AdCon, and then some ex officio people as well. That would include me and Liz, and they share also Dennis, excuse me, Paul served as an ex officio capacity. So, it's been a lit committee, lots of research and reading and background and so on. And we're now at the point where we're looking to identify particular areas of focus. And this week and next week, bringing some of the ideas back to the committees, the selectmen, the advisory committee, and the school committee about where we are. So, Dennis?
So, speaking of doing a lot of research, this is the, all the things we went through over the last several months. And I think the best way to summarize it is, there's a lot of different approaches that are done in different parts of the country, but the bottom line is that nobody fully funds special ed. Starting at the federal government and going then on to the various state governments. So, it became clear to us as a group, and really the focus was, should probably be on the funding mechanism and how we get better funding, as opposed to trying to rework the whole special ed process and say, rather than doing it by, you know, certain groups and priorities and whatever. So, we came, the last meeting, we talked about trying to narrow it down to three areas of focus. One was to, for greater reimbursement, perhaps on a statewide basis, for what we call exceptionally high cost placements. There would be some kind of threshold level and beyond that, there would be a different way to fund, perhaps a greater percentage reimbursement. To fully fund circuit breaker at 75 percent, including transportation costs. And to address the timing of circuit breaker reimbursements, which some of you may be familiar with, you put in the circuit breaker reimbursement for one year, but it actually comes in the next fiscal year. And frankly, that's not a big problem for Hingham because we have adequate reserves, but it is a problem in other parts of the state. So, we looked at those three. We also looked the last time at the, all the bills that are pending before the legislature that are education-related. And it's about four or five pages worth that will be in a matter of hearings next month. And primary Linda Port and Laura Burns will be attending a number of those hearings. But I think that kind of brings you up to date in terms of what the focus is on. And then, once we look at those bills and talk to people about that, look at, get feedback on these priority areas to go after, then the plan would be to really try to make some impact on Beacon Hill. Then toss the ball to Paul because that's his area of expertise.
Hey, just briefly, very briefly, I met with Linda Port and Laura Burns a week ago and we went over some of the dozens of legislative proposals that are in the session. And we have planned a meeting with our representative, Gabe Rowley, who's been willing to assist us in going through the process to be able to try to focus on this, Dennis said, the priorities that we set forth and maybe work with the chair of the education committee and hopefully get something passed that will benefit us and all the communities.
Great, well, we're taking advantage of your legislative chops in a couple of areas. I think it'll be, it'll be a good opportunity to see what we can do. That's great. Okay. A little bit ahead of the schedule I thought we would be because Bob Garrity isn't here yet, but that's okay. So, 7.4 is to consider action on the high school fields project bid award. I know that, I think I'll let you all know by email, that we did not get a decision from the attorney general's office. We did anticipate something or were led to believe that we would get something by this afternoon. We did not with respect to the bid protest hearing that was held last Tuesday. There's a mechanism and a process by which those decisions get issued and they have to be approved up the ladder. And I don't think that approval was forthcoming this afternoon. We will have it very soon, could be this week. In any event, based on, I think, the discussion that was held at the hearing, as well as indications we've gotten, bless you, the DAG's office, there's no need for us to wait for that decision in order to move forward with an award. And Bob, again, you've walked in at perfect timing, you just started to discuss the issue. Bless you.
Thank you. It's me going for a while, so not necessarily.
So, we have, as you know, last week, and Dennis wasn't here, but he did have the opportunity to watch the meeting.
It was a simple lady talking.
And has been caught up, up to speed on everything. You did get a number of photographs and other information that I forwarded you today, some of which came to us by Brate Builders, some of which came to us from the landscape architect that is working on the Marshfield High School project, which includes athletic fields. A few of us did get the opportunity to take a look at that site on Friday. And I also forwarded to you a memo that details some things that we might want to talk about in more depth. I know that Dennis had some specific questions that he had forwarded to Bob Garrity and also to Bill Seymour. We've gotten those responses, I forwarded those responses to you so they can help inform your decision-making process. To the extent that anyone has other questions that haven't been answered by those, can you just let me finish my sentence, thanks? Or that haven't been raised so far, certainly we can raise those now. Bob Garrity is here to answer, Bill Seymour. We do have representatives from both bidders here as well, to the extent that we need to address them further. Yes, Liza?
Can you just give me the gist of this site visit?
Sure.
Because I wasn't aware that that happened.
Right, and that wasn't necessarily purposeful. What happened was, we became aware of an opportunity to go take a look at Marshfield because that is happening concurrently with our middle school project in time. Brate is the general contractor there, as well as at the middle school here. And we found out that they had listed Marshfield as representative experience in their bid documents. We were under the impression that that was, the athletic portion was going to be way behind, but apparently they accelerated that. And when we learned the extent to which it had been accelerated, we thought, oh gee, there's an opportunity to maybe take a look at something. So, initially, it was just my desire to go look at it. I then talked to a couple of other people and the desire was to keep it a small group and not to have quorum of the school committee necessarily. Initially, it wasn't clear who was going to be able to make it. It ended up being more people than I thought. So, it was not an intention to leave anybody out. It was scheduled at a time and on a day when the landscape architect could be there. So, I was told essentially, this is the day and the time, and if you want to go, go. Carol had to go out of town, for instance, and so she wouldn't have been able to go anyway as well, so.
Well, I did learn of it. I was a little surprised. Ed and I had actually had a conversation on Tuesday following up from the Monday meeting. And one of my questions to him was regarding its gate, or Brate was using the turf supplier, the subcontractor. Should we look into who is that subcontractor and, you know, what experience do they have? And, you know, we didn't really get into it, but then I understand that was a topic that was addressed at the visit to Marshfield. So, I was pleasantly surprised to learn that it was, as I understand, same subcontractor used by both Brate and Rad.
Not exactly. That's not exactly true.
Well, then, you can explain.
I can. And all of that information, I would have been happy to share with you at any time during the week, even leading up to the site visit, before it was even scheduled. So, feel free always to reach out to me if you have a question and you feel that maybe I can answer or I can get you the answer from our professionals that are working on the project.
I had a conversation with Ed. I didn't feel I necessarily needed to have a conversation with others. And then, but then I learned about this opportunity that I would have appreciated to have been included in to answer my own questions, so expressing that desire to be able to do my own homework as well.
No, I understand that. And again, my intention was so that we would not have a quorum at the meeting, at the site visit. It ended up that we actually did, but we, but that was accidental.
So, therefore, we didn't talk to you.
That's right. In any event, with respect to the subcontractors that are being used, it's true that both Brate, well, for our project, both Brate and Rad list Northeast Turf as the subcontractor that would actually do the installation of the artificial surface itself, but different contractors who prepare the base.
Real, excuse me, that's not true. I don't believe Mr. Del. I did not list, I don't think so.
You didn't?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and who did they list?
We, we had-
Rob, why don't you come up here?
Okay.
We use three different vendors when we do projects, depending on the price. And Northeast Turf, Field Turf was not going to be the choice for this project. That could have changed.
Bill, was that part of, when you did the supplemental and you requested information about who they might use, that was one of the-
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Questions, okay.
It probably still could change, right, based on the buyout of the project, if you were awarded?
It could.
Yeah.
Okay, so the short answer is, the subcontractor that Brate is currently using on Marshfield is apparently not the subcontractor that Rad would use for our project for the installation of the turf itself. And certainly, the site contracting work for the base preparation would be different as well. Because I understand you self-perform?
We self-perform.
That base work?
Yes.
And on the Marshfield project, you're using Durenzo, site contractor?
That's correct.
And you specified Reed for our project?
I didn't put down Reed on that supplemental, but that's what I planned on using.
And that's Mr. Reed sitting next to you, isn't it?
I didn't remember seeing anything about itemizing the subcontractors in any of the information that I got, so that was why I raised the question.
Sure, no, it's a good question. One of the issues that came up, that was actually raised in Brate's bid protest, was specifically the post-bid communication that Gail made to request information about subcontractors that each contractor might use, a non-binding indication. And that was the subject matter of the bid protest by Brate initially, which was withdrawn at the hearing. So, one of the, one of the things that came up when we did take a look at Marshfield, and some of you may have been able to see it in the photos or not. If you took a look at the memo that came from Birchwood Design, which is the landscape architect for Marshfield and actually happens to be the landscape architect for our middle school project as well, there were some issues raised, and this is, I think this is a second report because this is a report that's dated today, based on a visit of Friday. And we were there with the landscape architect at that time. And at that time, when I asked the question of the architect, did you notice any issues that needed to be addressed? And he said yes, and he indicated that he had prepared a memo previously. So, there was a prior memo to this that outlined the issues that were raised with respect to the field. I had requested a copy of that memo, I was told I would get a copy of that memo. What you got today and what I received is the only thing that we did receive. So, there is a prior memo, I don't know that it'll shed any more light. I mean, this does indicate that field's improved from the previous visit, so there's clearly a prior visit where there, issues were indicated. Still areas of concern over the plenary of the field, visible high and low spots of the field. Finish condition is still not acceptable and the turf installer has to prepare a course of remediation to rectify the plenary of the field. Bill, can you explain us what plenary is? Just state your name and-
Bill Seymour, the town's consultant for Gail Associates. The plenary standard is established in the specifications, both ours and those from Marshfield, as an eighth of an inch in 10, meaning that there can't be more than an eighth of an inch deviation vertically over a 10-foot run in any direction from any point. We specify in the specifications that the field is laser graded using laser-guided grading equipment and compaction equipment that results in that degree of plenary typically being achieved. Not sure how much more you want me to go into, right?
No, as long as everyone understands that I, I just, we're going to use that as a basis for anything. I want to make sure everyone understands what it is, that's all.
Sure, okay.
Does anyone have any questions about that, Ed?
Bill, when the grading is done to the plenary satisfaction, can that be negated or, with the installation of the rug?
Yes. If the base isn't dynamically stable, and if it's- If the base isn't dynamically stable, and if it's easily rutted, the layout process of the carpet can rut it. That's usually pretty definitive. You see ruts where the layout vehicles, that there's a lull, like a forklift, that brings these large rolls out into position on the field. That equipment can rut it. Typically, the installation crew will back rake it and recompact it if necessary to reestablish the plenary before the carpet is actually seamed. Does that answer your question?
So if it's done properly from the get-go to the satisfaction with this plenary, it should hold up for a proper installation?
Those fields that we've been associated with where we have seen plenary issues, and I would suggest that I can even go a step further, those projects that involve Northeast Turf, the base lack of plenary, if there was one, was typically a function of the laser grading effort and the construction of the base to begin with. I haven't seen a case where, except for some minor dimples, the layout crew wasn't diligent enough to lay out the carpet and back feather it such that the requisite degree of plenary was achieved in the end state.
So this 200-point laser analysis that's talked about should identify, plus or minus good or bad, the setup of the base, correct?
If it's done properly, it should, yes.
And that was, that is done, and then Northeast, or whoever the vendor is, would need to accept that before they would lay down the carpet. Is that right?
I don't know what took place in Marshfield. I can't speak to that. I will tell you, in a Gale project, there's a fairly deliberate step where we approve the base and the base is accepted by the turf contractor. One of the things that puzzled me a little bit about Marshfield is that the architect didn't seem to have any type of explanation as to why those initial plenary issues had manifested themselves and at what juncture that happened. I didn't, I'm not sure I understood that.
And maybe that would have been included in the prior memo. I don't know. So we had a discussion with the landscape architect. His name was Art Eddy. Chris Bradner was also with him. I know Chris from the middle school project, from Birchwood Design, and they spoke to us freely about the issues that they saw and pointed some out to us while we were there. Just explain to us how you go about fixing this. And at the time, when we met on Friday, they were in the process of going through a rolling procedure, and hopefully that will solve the issues, and if not, then what could happen?
Again, I'm not familiar with this project, so I'm not certain as to what resulted in the plenary that we saw in the original photographs and the residual plenary issues that we saw on our site visit. Assuming that the base was sufficiently stable and compacted, you can mitigate poor plenary to some extent with a roller on top of the carpet. It's not good practice. We've done 153 fields at this point. I won't say we've never seen it done on a Gale job, because we have. It's not good practice, and it's really a last resort to try to achieve plenary once the carpet's down. You shouldn't be in that position. If you are in that position, if the base is dynamically stable enough, you shouldn't be able to mitigate that lack of plenary simply by rolling it. These fields are intended to be driven on with rubber tire loads, truck loads, when you plow them, that actually have more pounds per square inch pressure than the roller that they're using to try to reduce the lack of plenary. But you can mitigate it to a point. If you get beyond that point and further rolling of the humps or the dips doesn't result in, doesn't achieve the desired result, your only recourse is to open up the carpet, probably not at the location of a seam, if you're lucky, at the location of a seam, and then rebuild the base, regrade the base, and compact the base within that area, and then seam the carpet back up. It's a lengthy process. It's a process that you'd rather not have to do.
Could you explain the difference in the engineered seam when the carpet is first installed versus the seam that could result from doing that?
Yep. Part of that is a function of Field Turf. Field Turf has a flap on the end of each 15-foot panel. They lay one panel upside down on the other, and they run a bag stitch down the flap, and then they flip that panel back over. That's very different than making a cut away from those flaps and then doing a conventional carpet seaming, where you bring the two cut edges together with backing tape and glue and make a different type of seam. Some carpet manufacturers, producers, installers, make all of their seams that way. It varies from manufacturer to manufacturer.
The architect mentioned, or perhaps it was one of the other contractors, mentioned that Marshfield soil is very sandy there. Could the consistency, the soft sandy consistency there, where we tend to have a harder, more rocky, denser soil, would that translate into maybe we won't experience difficulties as a result?
What, the stone base is designed as a function of the subsurface conditions, and I don't know anything about how much stone they put down. I don't know about the gradation of the stone. I don't know the required degree of compaction. In a typical project, the sub-base, once all the top soil is gone, and once you've achieved the sub-base elevation below the stone base, the manufactured stone base, you would shape that, you would compact it, you would grade it to the same tolerance, frankly, as the stone base, and then build on that. If you've got an unstable substrate at that elevation, you'd want to fix that somehow. And so I can't speak to that. Whether it was an organic layer, whether it was a compressible clay, whether it was a sand, a non-dense sand that you couldn't compact properly, there's all kinds of things that could go on there.
Bill, does the need to do a cut after the field is down?
Yep.
Does that, what warranty does that carry compared to the original warranties?
Yeah, one of the reasons, that's a great question. One of the reasons why I think, in the memo that I saw today from the landscape architect, it's impressing upon the turf installer to remedy the situation. Part of that is because of the warranty that's in place. Implicit in the turf installer putting down the carpet, either by deliberate step or by virtue of just putting down the carpet, they then own the base. How the base got the way it is no longer really matters in terms of the warranty. The reason you want the carpet manufacturer installer to fix the problem is because their warranty would otherwise be at risk. So I'm sure that they're not going to let the carpet manufacturer do anything that's going to put their warranty in jeopardy. If somebody else prosecuted the fix, and that's, this is why it starts to get really a little crazy. If somebody else prosecutes the fix and the carpet installer wasn't in agreement with regard to, perhaps I want to put a plate compactor on the hump and knock the hump down. Well, if the turf installer manufacturer isn't on board with that solution, it could abrogate the warranty.
I'm getting the sense that the installer and the manufacturer are the same people?
They are, typically. As a general rule, yes. It's a little more complicated than that, but as a rule, that's the case.
So, so in the stuff that came from the landscape architect, I read through most of that. It talked about an eight-year warranty in there?
Yes. They had a standard, industry-standard, eight-year warranty.
But we've talked about not having to replace the carpet for hopefully 12...
There's a difference between the expected lifespan of the carpet and the warranted life of the carpet.
So my question is relating to durability, or whatever you want to call it, that if you have to do these kind of fixes, while it might well get through the eight years that it's warranted, could it compromise the longevity of the installation?
It could in theory, but it possibly could work the other way as well. What do I mean by that? The seeming process where you use glue and tape is very, very subject to construction practice. What's the moisture content outside, what's the moisture outside, what's the temperature, what's the temperature of the glue when it goes down, how much backing tape was used, how close in proximity did the edges get? There's a lot of things that go on, construction-practice-wise. That's one of the things that really needs to be done by people who know what they're doing under very careful conditions. If it's done right, you can craft an argument that says the seam is more durable than the areas adjacent to the seam. If it's done poorly, then it's one of the first things that will come unhinged as the field is used over time. So it varies. That's the point, Dennis, excuse me, Mr. Free. It varies over time.
Bill, did you say plenary is an eighth of an inch?
The degree of the standard, in our specification and theirs, is one-eighth of an inch deviation over a 10-foot run.
It just, you know, having looked at what we had to do with our track in three-feet increments, it's just nice that we're getting down to an eighth of an inch, because usually we don't have those kind of troubles on our fields.
I...
I mean, you go out to the Hingham fields, you look at the baseball, you know, it's feet, but I guess...
A field contractor once told me that the smartest employee in his organization was his laser grader.
Okay.
Not the guy operating it, the laser grader.
But here's my key question for you. I thought I heard Art Eddy say that they've not officially signed off on this. So, to me, is this a lot of speculation, because, you know, the project's not completely handed over?
That's correct.
I mean, so, I mean, it's nice that we talk about these things. It might be one of those things, especially when we have two very good people here wanting to compete for the business, and they're focused on one issue, and there happens to be some hiccups. But the fact of the matter is, this has not been signed off as a done product, a project, and they're six months into it and saying, oh, we got all these things. So it's not completely done, correct? This hasn't been signed off as acceptable.
It has not been signed off as acceptable. On the other hand, there have been, in my opinion, there have been some things that have happened to this point that are atypical of the process. And yes, you can do workarounds and you can fix them. You can get the field, and again, we've done 152 of these, and not every one has gone perfectly along this glide path. We've had contractors that perform better than others. But it's not accepted, and I, based on meeting Mr. Eddy, I'm confident that when he accepts that field on behalf of that owner, it will beat the standard.
And as you said to me, there's, with your point, when, if you were the person signing off, you would have made sure that sub-base was completely ready before you rolled the turf?
We do a fairly formal process whereby we look at the base with the turf installer, because we don't want any alibis on their part going forward, and the contractor, and we turn over the base.
Okay. But you do a thorough review before you turn over the base?
We try to.
Okay.
So is there, you know, we've talked a lot about this in reading that specification and the different kinds of stone and the different, whatever, which I can't tell you I really understood everything, but is this, is this a more, not delicate, but is this a more demanding kind of process than your typical process that you might do for a building or whatever, or not?
Boy, that's a very open-ended question.
Well, I don't know how else to ask it. I'm just, we've talked a lot about it.
When you're doing a synthetic turf field project, there's only really one thing that can go wrong, in my opinion. It is, it is the construction of the base. The carpet is the carpet, and frankly, if something goes wrong with the carpet, you replace it. The base has to do, has to do two things very well. It has to drain freely, and it has to be, it has to do three things. I knew there was a third. It has to be very planer, because you don't want it rutted or dimpled. It has to drain very freely, and it has to be dynamically stable over time. All three of those compete with one another. If I wanted it perfectly draining, I'd put pea stone down. But if I dry through pea stone, it's going to rut. If I wanted it to be perfectly planer, I'd put concrete down, but it's not going to drain. So those three things are in direct competition with one another. And you can screw up anything on the field. If you don't get the separation of the drainage tiles exactly at 20 feet, it's okay. If you don't, again, if you make an error with a carpet marking, it's okay. The base is, is the key to success on this project.
Particularly for us, because the drainage is such a key component of the whole project, and that's kind of the flagship aspect of the drainage system.
It accounts for about half of the cost. A lot of people think that in the $9.50 per square foot of the project for the field, that that's carpet and infill. It's not. It's half of its carpet and infill. The other half is the dynamic stone base.
Any other questions for Bill on that? Now, I sent around a lot of stuff today, and I apologize for that, but it was coming in, and I wanted to make sure it went out and everyone got an opportunity to take a look at it before this evening. Any questions on any of the things that came through today with respect to photos or anything else?
Well, I, just one quick, Bill, did I interpret a photograph that was sent, that there was a, turf was opened at Cat's Field at Curry College? Was that, that rug net, did that rug necessitate opening up after it was installed?
That carpet was opened after it was installed.
And after the fact, how did it work out?
It's worked out well.
And it's held up well?
It has held up well.
And that was a Gale and Rad job?
It was. Not a design, build, Gale, Rad job. We, they bid, our job.
Mm-hmm. I didn't get to see the whole thing, but I did see something about that. The reason why it was opened up was why?
As I said, there's only two things that can go, very few things that can go wrong. We specified a stone that was correct in terms of the fines content of the stone. Rad submitted a sample and a certification as to the gradation they intended to install. They had delivery slips that the stone that came to the site met that specification and that submittal. My opinion, and Mr. Delmonico may disagree with me, I don't know, my opinion is that the stone that was delivered deviated from that. At that point, and that was nine years ago, we didn't know enough to take grab samples of what's actually, independent grab samples of what actually arrived at the site, we do now. And the stone choked up, it had a lot of fines in it, and it didn't drain properly. We ate part of the cost of fixing it. Rad ate part of the cost of fixing it. We agreed to make it right on behalf of the owner and did so. And that did necessitate opening the carpet, did it not? We pulled it back.
Just a couple, I think, three squares.
Yep. Yep.
And just so, there's only a few people in the room who aren't privy to this information. So for those of you who are not privy to this information, what we're talking about are, there's some photos that were provided to us of the turf in Marshfield, which led to some of us taking a look at it more closely. There were some photos that were provided to us that were representative of work that Rad has done at various sites, kind of like, well, look at what he did and look at what he did. So we're taking a look at the whole process and it's, you know, all of these examples in their entirety to put them into perspective and help us inform our decision tonight, so...
So in light of that, Ray, though, and I'll toss this one in Bob's direction, Bob Garrity, so, but really what we're here to determine is whether Brait, as the apparent low bidder, is the responsible, responsible and credible? Is that the right...
Eligible.
Eligible. Eligible. So, I mean, what, how, how good or bad Rad is at this point is really to decide at this point, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Absolutely should.
Okay.
You should look at Brait first, they're the low bidder, and you should decide whether they, whether you folks decide, with all this information that you've gone through now, whether they're, they should be considered the responsible and eligible bidder. And if the answer's no, then you should go through the same process with Rad, after, after you make the first decision.
Right, right. Because I think it's, and we've discussed this before, I just wanted to make sure that it was, because it's not a comparison, really.
Yeah, exactly.
Does Brait rise to meet the level of responsible and eligible?
Yep.
And if so, then they should be awarded the job, and if we decide that they do not, then we would go to the next, next highest bidder.
Sure. No, that's absolutely right. I just did not want to not forward the photos.
No, no, I understand.
Okay. Any questions for Bob on the standard, on anything else?
I have a question, and I'm new to this, so I may, just want to confirm my thoughts. So when we go through this process, Gail is the designer on it and works with whatever contractor we designate...
Sure.
...to follow through on the whole process, and you do all your checks and balances at all the different stages with... at all the different stages with that contractor?
Right. It doesn't matter who the contractor is, Gale
Is still there.
is the designer of record, and they'll be involved directly in all the approvals and reviews and that type of stuff.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on any of this? Anything going back to Gale's initial May 9th review and recommendation of Brae's, I'm sorry, it's not May 9th, it's
May 3rd?
May 3rd. May 3rd of Brae's bid.
I think, I don't know if it's the only question, but the question I have is, we've had a lot of discussion with Bill about this, you know, the issue about the base and was it accepted by Northeast and, you know, and all that, and the landscape architect and whoever. But ultimately, as they say, the buck stops with the general contractor, right? So, I mean, the various subs do things, but ultimately, our recourse and the person that's ultimately responsible is the general contractor. And that would be true whether that was Brae or anybody else. So-
Or whether they sub perform.
Right, yeah.
Right. From our perspective, our contracts with the general contractor, whoever it is.
Right.
They might have their own little fights between each other.
So if Northeast, for some, some reason, and I'm not impugning them in any way, accepted something they shouldn't have, or if the stone comes in wrong, or whatever it might be, ultimately, the person on the hook, if you will, is the general contractor. And that's who we're looking for to make us whole and to give us, to make the job
That's right.
what it's supposed to be.
Anything else on that? Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add? I know there's really nothing more on the protest. We're just waiting for the decision, and we can, we can, I had mentioned, I think initially, that we can move forward and make an award tonight
Right.
without that.
Right. I've been, I've never done one before where you've had a decision in the AG's pending and making an award. There's nothing wrong with it. I, I was just trying to think in my own mind whether it would make any sense, and I'm almost afraid to say this, to make some sort of a conditional award. Or you could make an award, but if people wanted to revisit it next week or something, in the event that the AG says, no, the, we were wrong about everything, and, you know, it's a different standard and whatever, then we could not execute the contract. We could award the contract, and we could not execute it. In fact, that might be a good way. Awarded, but not executed until after the, the Attorney General's decision has been sent out.
Would that be different from what we were talking about last week, which would be an intent-to-award?
Right.
Or would that be the same, the same effect?
Well, I guess you could award it, but you could reconsider the award if you hadn't executed the contract. That's probably, so yes, it would be different. Last week, we were trying to get something to the AG's office to say, well, this is our intent, so that we could at least be able to defend whatever that position was in front of the AG. But we, we obviously had a 50-50 break there, and we didn't have any definitive position. So we asked the AG, well, you've really heard everything anyhow, except you haven't heard who the committee has decided to award to because they haven't decided. And the AG understood that, and I believe they were going to give us some sort of direction that either the process we've been following and we're about to exercise on was an appropriate process, or that either Brae, or I guess it really would really be Rad's protest at this point, that Rad's protest had merit because Rad was basically taking the position that they were locked, pretty much locked into the six projects. They being Rad, Rad and Brae were locked into the six projects that were submitted with the bid statement, and we really shouldn't be looking into any other additional, any other information. So that's how I understand their protest, although it kind of bounced around a little bit at the hearing, which is not unusual.
So, so what are the, what are the pros and cons? I know you're kind of, we're kind of throwing a curve at you, and the Attorney General might throw a curve at us. What would be the pros or cons of doing an intent-to-award versus this award but not execute?
Okay, well, I guess intent-to-award would be easy to get out of later on. If we wanted to call it an intent-to-award, but the, the pro would be that it's something we could get out of very easily because it's an intent-to-award, and we haven't quite awarded yet. So I, I'd have no problem with that if that's what the committee wanted to go with.
But that being said, we don't, we don't expect the AG to come back and say, no, you have to award to this, or you have to award to that. Isn't the issue really?
Right, right. Well, what, I guess what they could do, if they bought, what I heard most of Rad's argument was, is that we set up a far stricter process than what I've been saying in looking at the documents. And we are stuck with that process, then what that would do is that would raise all sorts of questions about some of the supplemental information that Brae ended up offering at our, at our suggestion. But it would raise, it would say that, well, no, you got to look at what they submitted at the time the bid was submitted, and forget all these supplemental projects that Brae has relied upon to get more background on whether they should be considered qualified.
Well, I've just done that, just maybe even to remind people at home, if they're following how this all works, if they're-
They're not watching the moves?
Well, don't remind me. So, thank you. So it's an advisory decision in any event. And from what I've heard from you and just generally speaking, the case law, we have discretion, a wide discretion to make awards.
Well, that's my feeling, sure. But that's where possibly the AG could come down with a real hard-line decision that'd say, no, you folks are all wrong. You live and die by the, what was submitted as of the time of the bid.
It's still advisory, whatever decision.
Oh, it's still advisory, right. And if it was challenged one way or the other, you'd probably have a very good chance at abiding by what the committee's decision was convincing a judge that that was the right thing to do, in my opinion.
And then the decision that was shared with us last week that indicated more in that direction was to a different subsection or a different chapter of the law or something like that, right?
It was. The waiver issue was at 149.
Right. Yeah, that, to my mind, had, really did not fit our situation here. Because it was a different law, number one, that is, that portions of which are more strictly applied because it's a formal prequalification requirement and filed sub-bidders and all that type of stuff. Whereas in our case, it's really lowest responsible and eligible bidder, period. There's no prequal. It's really a question of after you get the bids, you take a look at them, and you should be able to check, do whatever you want to do to check out the bidder before you make the decision.
I'm reading from your memo to Deborah Anderson dated May 7th, and you have a brief statement here that says, "The protester, whether Brae or Rad, bears the burden to establish that the awarding authority acted in bad faith or in an arbitrary or unreasonable manner." Am I assuming that that refers to the point at which the school committee has awarded the bid, and there is then a protest of that award? A little different from the protests that now.
Yes.
That then the standard becomes, the protester needs to establish that the school committee awarding authority acted in bad faith or in an arbitrary or unreasonable manner.
Yes, exact. If we were, if a judge decided that we were, we had broken some black-letter law, some clear statutory requirement, then they wouldn't even get to the arbitrary or capricious standard. They would just say, no, the school committee interpreted the law incorrectly. You know, they shouldn't have awarded to the contractor because of this and that.
Okay.
Do we, do we actually have to go ahead and vote now on whether to award to Brae or not? That's, that's the next step, right?
Well, well, I guess just procedurally.
Yeah.
If you did an intent-to-award, then I guess that's good. But you folks are going to have, after we get the AG's decision, we could, you know, send that around, and you'd still have to convene again to decide whether to follow through on the intent-to-award.
But if you vote to award with a condition, the vote stands as long as the condition is not
Right. You could vote to award with the understanding that if something pops up in the AG's decision that gives us pause, then the committee could reconsider that vote
Or not.
Or not, at its next meeting. And then I'd say, if you do vote to award, then don't execute the contract.
So do you have to vote as to which vote?
Yeah.
You're going to?
I suppose we could put a motion on the floor, right, and then Then decide, then have discussion about that.
Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
I
Mr. Brae is here, and I'd really like to be heard before a vote is taken, if possible.
Okay, Bob.
Fine with him?
Okay.
It's actually only one, one quick thing, because it was mentioned previously regarding-
Bob, if you could just come up here, state your name, and then you can, yep.
Bob Brae with Vice President of Brae Builders.
I have a handout I'd like. It's on Natick High School took this morning some shots after two full football seasons. They're all taken this morning, except for the first one, which was aerial view we took at the completion of a-
Thanks, Bob.
I know it's both durability and whatnot, and I think you'll see.
That's the area. That was taken a while ago, but these all were taken this morning. You can see how crisp these lines are. No irregularities within any of the lines or the fields.
So there's no ruler on here that shows me an eighth of an inch every 10 feet, though, right?
No, but like the photos that were shown before, you can see, and I agree, you can see them when they are there. Again, this, this field looks like it was put down this morning. I mean, it's in fantastic shape. And I also, when you get to the, you know, photos of the track, you'll see really, really crisp lines even on the track, really differentiated.
Bob, I asked a question last week, and Mr. Gorman didn't know the answer. Natick has now had a full cycle of use. Is that correct? You said two foot, you said two football seasons?
I believe two full football seasons, and they're finishing up their second track, I believe, season.
That's, oh, I wanted to bring your-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shannon, David Delmonico, any questions?
Sure.
Just two things. One is, someone had asked, is the turf warranty for eight years? Yes, it is. It's for eight years. Hopefully, you can get 12 years out of it, but if not, you want to be able to roll the turf up and put brand-new turf down. So the critical key is the base construction. The warranty for the base construction is one year. So you have to build it properly from the beginning. Second point, you know, this is a synthetic turf project. This town has fought very hard to get approved. Brae has built one field, maybe successfully. They've started to do a second one, and it's, it's not successful. They're having problems with it. The turf company put the turf down and the infill and moved on to another field. They thought they were done. So that was an unacceptable project from our point of view.
Just, can I ask one question? So, but Northeast Turf, who was the installer there?
Mm-hmm.
Is that an installer that you have used in the past?
We've used them maybe 70 times.
Seventy?
Seventy-five. We've installed more than 100 fields.
Okay. So, and you've had good experience with them?
We've had great experiences with them. Great.
So, did you have a motion or no? You don't have to.
Well, I mean, again, on, on the idea that we will have then some discussion after it, it seems to me that I move that we make an intent-to-award to Brae Builders for the phase two of the field project.
Do we want to do an intent, or do we want to actually-
I thought we were going to talk about whether we want to do an intent or whether we want to do a, an award but not execute. Conversation first.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting we can do one and then amend it the other.
It seems to me that we could actually award and just not execute a contract and make the award perhaps conditioned on, on the results of the AG's decision.
It's okay with me. I'm, my-
Yes, sir?
Can I have clarification with the Attorney General?
Just tell me who you are, please.
Leon Marion, 36 Selms Street.
Sure.
Could I just have clarification as far as what the Attorney General is going to decide?
Well, we don't know what the decision will be, but there was a bid protest hearing initially brought about post-bid communication that was withdrawn, and then a counter-bid protest that was brought by Rad with respect to a, an interpretation of the bid requirements. And the argument was that, that we should be taking a very strict read of those bid requirements. And I think Brae's argument would be that our interpretation would be much more loose. We have broad discretion, that we can look at not only the representative experience presented with the bids, but supplemental experience, representative, representative experience that was presented after the fact. Bob, is there anything else you want to explain about that?
Well, I'm just, will there be discussion before or after the vote? It sounds like it's going to be after the vote.
Well, normally, we, we make a motion and put a motion on the table, and then we have discussion about it. So we were kind of in the process of working through the mechanics of that. This is a little bit uncharted territory for this group in terms of doing a bid award. You know, we have done it in the past. And this is a different situation because we were faced with a bid protest even before an award was made, which is-
That's what makes it really strange.
A little bit out of the ordinary and a little awkward. So we're just trying to make sure that we, one, do it right under the law, and, two, reserve ourselves the opportunity to do what we need to do to, to alter the decision that we make based on what the AG may or may not say. And, you know-
Which is not legally binding.
That's right.
And also move along the project.
Right.
I'm just, okay. I grew up in Hingham and went through public schools, played in sports. I'm just surprised there aren't more people from town here to hear this because this is such an important decision, who we choose.
But it is on TV.
Okay. So then, with that said, from what, you know, the only reason I very, paid much attention to the voting process, and there was a lot of slogans and information to get out. But when I read the Hingham Journal and heard about this, the protest, it made me look at both, both companies. So one on the websites. When I see Brae, Brae is great. I'm very happy that they're building the middle school. But what I could see between the two companies is that one is on one field and one is on multiple fields. And you talk about the, the Natick High School that had two seasons of playing, while the New England Patriots has had years of playing on it, and that is a very successful project. What concerns me is that this is something that is going to be in our town for years, and I would hate to see someone cutting their teeth and using Hingham as, as a starting point. So I hope that that gets taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to your question, I was start, I was providing a starting point. It's not clear to me which is, frankly, which is the right way to go. It sounds like we go either way. So I'm, I didn't necessarily have an opinion. I was just trying to get us moving in a direction.
In a direction.
So if we want to start with the award but, award but not execute, and discuss it from that point of view, it's fine with me.
Yeah, it would seem to me that- Yeah, it would seem to me that I think that's a safe way to go, that we can make an award conditioned upon the results of the Attorney General's decision and not execute a contract until that occurs.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, how do we feel? I mean, does anyone want to talk about their feelings? We did that last week. Anyone want to talk about their feelings about, you know?
Just the two approaches.
The two approaches, not the company.
So, award based on condition on the Attorney General's and the other.
Or an intent to award.
Yeah.
Period.
Which is really just delaying the award until.
We hear from the Attorney General.
I'm comfortable whatever the majority of the committee would want to do. I think it would get to the same results.
Right.
Maybe you'd want to come out and vote on the law with a reconsideration if the Attorney General's decision is contrary to whatever the action has something to do with.
Yeah, I guess my concern, or whatever, is that if we're going to end up revisiting it, should the Attorney General, for some reason, come out some way that we don't expect, I don't see an advantage in awarding. The advantage, I suppose, to awarding but not executing is if the Attorney General does not disagree with us.
Correct. Then we save the week or maybe.
Right.
So I think that's the award with the reconsideration, I think, is a good suggestion, Bob.
So move.
So we all feel comfortable with that?
So essentially, an award reserving the right to reconsider if the Attorney General's decision warrants.
Is contrary or?
I would move it as stated.
I would second.
So the motion and the second. Any discussion on that?
So what's the exact motion? Because people all chimed in.
Motion, the motion is to award with reconsideration if the Attorney General's decision is contrary to our decision.
But you're not yet naming the awardee.
No, just the process we're talking about.
What's our best guess as to when this decision would be available?
We were told it was being expedited and that we were going to have it today. That was, and then this afternoon, we heard that they hadn't obtained the approval from the higher up to issue it. So it may be tomorrow, it may be a couple days, it may be another week.
Right. So our understanding, the decision is written, but it's being reviewed by the higher up through the long process in the AG's office. The hearing officer who wrote it wouldn't give us a hint of what the decision was, so she's just waiting. But I bet it'll probably be a day or two.
So if this vote would just be that we would proceed on the basis of moving to award with reconsideration?
Yes.
But not to who?
Not yet. First step.
Does anybody want to say what they're thinking?
Well, I'm thinking it's a wasted time to vote, maybe unvote, revote, to kind of vote myself.
Well, yeah. I mean, I think if we were to do an intent.
Dammit, we're going to vote or we're not going to?
I'm ready to vote, you know? I don't know the legal mumble-jumbo, but I'm in Dr. Shire's camp.
So Ed, you're ready to vote? Or are you not ready to vote? I'm not clear.
Oh, if we're going to vote, I'll vote, sure.
But are you?
On this motion or?
On this.
I'm going to vote against this motion, but it'll pass.
So you don't want to have an award?
No, I think not.
Yeah.
Say that again.
You just want to award it, you're saying?
No, I would like to vote up or down, I guess, but.
Yeah.
I think we need the input from the Attorney General, and I think to vote one way or the other, obviously, one company or the other could be significantly impacted, as I understand it, by the Attorney General's decision.
Do you prefer not to vote at all until we hear from the Attorney General?
Exactly.
But then, aren't you then letting the Attorney General decide? It's still our.
Non-binding.
It's a non-binding thing.
It's a non-binding advisory decision.
We can still make the choice, so.
Right.
I guess I'm trying to minimize future litigation. How's that?
No, it's a fair point.
No, it's a legitimate point because it is an important additional piece that we don't know what it's going to be. So if you want a postponement decision, that's fine too.
I'm concerned about postponing and losing time. And, you know, if we're going to have litigation, we're going to have litigation regardless, and I don't know that we can do anything now to stop that, whether we decide one way or the other. I think our intention was to start construction right after graduation, and that is three and a half weeks away.
Right.
And I'm concerned that if we delay a week or more, that we'll come off, we'll go off schedule.
So let me ask Bob a question, then. So do you see, from our perspective, depending on whatever, you know, if we do something along this line, pending reconsideration, does that weaken or strengthen our position in any way, or put us in any greater jeopardy from either side, in your opinion?
And generally, what?
Well, in other words, if we vote one way and the Attorney General says something else, then we come back and reconsider and change our opinion, change our vote, does that change our, you know, how would that affect our status?
No, I don't think it, I don't think it would. I think it'd be fine. That's why, you know, I feel a little bit better because of notice of intent to award, but as Ray was saying, then you probably lose one or two weeks while you're trying to figure out what the AG said and what the, you'd have to weaken me and decide what the final vote is. So the only reason I'd be a little bit more comfortable is you, a notice of award is basically saying, yes, you folks have selected this particular company, and then the normal process is then you execute a contract with them first. That's where we're, you know, between the two sides of the front. So you save a little time, but if the AG comes, you save a lot of time, well, at least two weeks or so, if the AG, if you vote in a law and the AG's decision is consistent with that vote. They don't say that we followed up something in the process to get there. But again, I think you have the right to reconsider your voting anytime you want, as long as you haven't executed the contract. And if the AG did come up with a, if the AG did come up with a decision that wasn't consistent with our vote, then as long as you hadn't executed the contract, that you'd have a legitimate reason for reconsidering a vote, which you can always do.
And just a follow-up question. So obviously, we don't know what the AG will decide, but isn't the issue before the AG now the protest of RAD, which is asking essentially for a strict interpretation of the bid specification, and that we can't look at anything beyond that? So essentially, the answer is either going to be yes, you have to take a very strict interpretation, or it could be that we have broad discretion to take a look at whatever we like in determining what's appropriate.
I believe so, but I suppose the AG could even go the next step and say, they could say yes, well, they could say it based upon the information that was presented to us. We don't, we, the AG, doesn't believe that Bray is, has established, has sufficiently established that they are entitled to the award. I guess that's theoretically possible. I don't think they'd do that. I think they'd do it more on a process.
Right.
Perspective. You know, just saying, we, yes, we should have strictly applied the six-project rule as of the time of the bid.
Bob, you said the AG is non-binding.
Correct.
If the AG comes out and chooses A, is that appealable? Appealable?
No.
Okay, so that's fine.
It's no because there's nothing to appeal because it's non-binding. It's advisory.
Gotcha.
The next step would be litigation.
Next step would be, the party who was unhappy would, with our ultimate decision, would have to go to court and try to enjoin or stop the award.
So we could end up there regardless?
Oh, sure, sure.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment, sensing Mr. Marion and perhaps others in the audience at home are frustrated, thinking, don't you all just want the best field we can get? And I don't think there's anyone here, and certainly in the audience either, who doesn't want the best field we get, we can get. We all want that. But we also are wrestling with being respectful of the laws. So it isn't as if a lot of people have applied and we're looking at them all and choosing what we believe may be the best. Those criteria could be different, obviously, for different people, but the law says that there is a low bidder. And I think Dennis explained it well, and Bob affirmed, and we have to take this one step at a time. So that's public construction. That's what we deal with all the time, and, you know, there are lots of times frustrations about being in that situation. But I shouldn't suggest that all this wrestling is going on because everybody wants the best field we can get. We've worked long and hard, as you said, to be where we are, and now we want to move forward. But we have to be respectful of what the law says as well.
And just to follow it up, just in case folks weren't here the last time, and Bob has advised us, is that we look to the first bid of Bray, and we make a determination based on presumptions and so forth. So just my, I'm following the lead of counsel in our discussion, but whatever decisions I make will be in an effort to minimize our exposure to any litigation and also to benefit the town financially. But I'm very cognizant of the legal aspects of this, and that's driving my decision.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. We haven't indicated.
I second it.
A contractor.
It just says we're going to go forward.
Right.
Right.
In a particular way.
Well, I mean, I'll share my feelings. You know, I'm, I've read a lot, and I've looked at a lot, and I've thought about this quite a bit. And I have firsthand experience working with Bray on a project, and I know that the quality of their work is excellent. I'm very happy with what they're doing on the middle school project, and I've heard from them on other projects that they're doing a great job as well. I have concerns after reviewing what I've reviewed in the past two, three weeks, and I don't feel that they are the best contractor for this job. So my vote would be not to award to Bray. I am cognizant of the fact that their bid is lower, and obviously, we want to save money for the town and for the taxpayer, and we're all taxpayers, so it's our money. So I'm very cognizant of that. But I also know that this project has been in the public eye for a long time, and people are looking to us to make sure that we do it properly. And I'm not suggesting that Bray won't do it properly. Maybe what's going on in Marshfield is an anomaly. Maybe it's not their fault. I don't know. But I don't want to take the risk personally. And I have concerns, and as a result, I would not support awarding the bid to Bray.
So my only question is, the motion that's on the table doesn't specify.
Right.
Right. I'm just telling you what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Can we take a vote on Dennis's motion?
Which is to, which is move to award with reconsideration.
With reconsideration if the Attorney General's decision is contrary to our decision. And then maybe, once we get the procedure nailed down, we can go to the next step?
Well, I mean, if everyone's, I don't know that we need to vote on the procedure. If everyone's comfortable with the procedure, if Ed doesn't want to vote on that, he can abstain.
Well, have Paul and Liza chimed in? I'm not sure.
What, I said.
On the procedure.
I said either scenario.
Okay.
I just assumed that.
Liza, what about yours?
Yeah, I'm fine with the procedure.
All right. So it looks like we're ready to move forward.
So if that's the case, I would, I would move, just insert the words, move to award to Bray Construction with reconsideration should the AG rule contrary to our decision, the contract for phase two of the Fields Project, right? Second.
The motion and the second. Any further discussion? Questions, comments?
I would, you know.
I thought you were going to do like what last time, where everyone went down.
We don't have to do a roll call.
Well, I would just, you know, since I was not here the last time, and I certainly, I watched them on TV, and I went out to Marshfield, and I've read all the stuff, whatever, but I must say, I feel like, a little bit like fiddling on the roof, you know, on the one hand, and on the other hand, and on the other hand, and on the other hand. I've been on both sides of the fence a couple of times in the last few, several days. So I would be interested to hear if people would like to express their opinions now, a week later, having heard that. I would be interested to hear, you know, people's thoughts. If they don't want to express them, that's fine, but. I just, I don't think I, I was on record last week. I thought I gave my, why I felt I should vote in a certain way, so I don't, I just, I'm comfortable with that. Nothing's really changed. I.
I'll chime in. I've been doing more homework and thinking about, it wasn't completely clear last week, and, you know, I guess I was recorded as leaning toward RAD, but looking at the work that needs to be done and knowing Gail will be involved, and the difference in the amount of money is a significant amount of money. And so I think we should award to Bray.
I don't think there's any substitute for experience. That's what I said last week, and I will say it again.
So similar to Paul, I was on record with the focus on Bray because our attorney told us that the process is to focus on Bray. My opinion has not changed. I do still continue to support Bray. I would like to say one thing, though, to Mr. Delmonico, I can't see him there, is that three years ago, when I joined Long Range Planning, and we first started talking about this project, and I started to socialize it, could we actually bring this field project to the schools after we lost, after Warchee was defeated? And everyone said, get Rob Delmonico. And I didn't know you were RAD, but I just want to let you know that, as I said to you last week, my focus is on Bray because that's what our attorney told us to, but your reputation is very, very good. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. I do think that what our attorney has told us, lowest responsible and eligible bidder, skill, ability, and integrity. I do believe Bray has met those qualifications. I do agree, after meeting with Bill Seymour, that I'm confident that he will make sure that the handoff in the sub-base before it went to the installer will be excellent. We also try to get very specialized bids here. As I recall, we only received four total bids, so I think we've done a good job on that. It's also $100,000 cheaper, and so I stick with what, as Paul mentioned last week, you know, I said this basically all this last week, but I continue to support Bray as the lowest eligible bidder, lowest responsible and eligible bidder.
Well, what Ed said last week really stuck with me, and I have thought a lot about this, in particular because of the project experience that we were looking for, particularly for this turf field, and how hard we worked, sort of echoing what Mr. Merriman said. So I actually am not supporting Bray tonight.
And just a, I just make a comment because I already expressed my feelings. Just Liza, in terms of your comment about Gail, yes, Gail will be involved to a point, but there, what's left on their contract for this project is very limited. We're also going to be talking about project management later this evening, and they are not ultimately responsible for what happens on this project. The general contractor we hire is ultimately responsible for what happens on this project. So if something goes right, we can congratulate Gail. If something goes wrong, we can't blame Gail, so.
Well, that was really helpful.
Well, I think...
We have a vote.
Yeah. That's four to three.
Four to three.
I didn't vote yet, right?
No? I'm sorry. I thought you did.
No.
And Ed, you said no excuse for experience, no...
Is your motion for...
You didn't indicate...
So that's what people...
No, no, no. I made the motion, because I thought that was the motion that had to be made. I didn't express an opinion. So I think we went from three to three to three to three, right?
I think it would be helpful for the note-taking to know who said yes for Brait and who was saying no, just to be totally clear.
Well, again, what I understand, this was the discussion, you know, before the vote. People were expressing their opinions.
You were going to listen.
Right. People were expressing their opinions as to which, what they thought was appropriate and how they were leaning, but a vote has not taken place.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Misunderstood as well.
No, I'm sorry. I posed, as I've done a couple of times in the past, I posed the motion because it was something that required discussion.
Right.
So I guess I need to go on record here. As I've said to myself and to my wife, you know, as you get older, things in the world become less black and white, but I've never seen anything with as many shades of gray as this particular decision. Between the whole legal contortions and the, you know, what's going back and forth with, you know, the meaning of responsible and eligible, and the various levels of experience and so forth, it's a very, I said, I mean what I said a little while ago, I have really gone back and forth. I think when it comes right down to it, however, this is something we're going to have to live with for a long, long time, and I think I have to come down in the camp despite the costs involved of being concerned with the fact that the experience is not there on the synthetic turf fields. So I would, I think, have to vote not to award to Brait.
And Ed, I assume that you were voting not to award to Brait?
That's correct.
So we ought to just vote...
We have four to three not to award to Brait, so do you want to make a motion to award to RAD?
I really, we, over here, Paul said I haven't changed my mind since last week.
I think we ought to just vote yea or nay.
So we need to be able to raise hands or something.
Right, exactly.
Because the minutes have to be accurate here. So people made statements, but I'm not sure that we...
Right. No, I think we all know, but for, just to clarify, so the motion was to award to Brait. Voting in favor was Liza, Paul, and Andy. Voting against was Ed, Dennis, Carol, and myself.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to award to Brad? Brait, uh, Brad, RAD, sorry. Excuse me. Combining the two.
It's a combination.
I would like to award to Andy, actually.
Yeah.
He'd be...
And I apologize, we don't mean to make light of this.
I would move to award to RAD with reconsideration should the AG rule contrary to our decision, the contract for the Phase Two of the Fields project.
The motion can have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have Ed, Dennis, Carol, and myself. Those opposed? Liza, Andy?
I would abstain.
Paul is abstained. Fair enough. A conditional award to Brad. Okay, you also, under that item, you all should have received a memo from Gail dated May 9th with respect to the concession building. Yes, thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
May 8th?
No, that's not...
Brait?
It's not, oh, yeah. We had gotten it last... Let's see, it was dated, it was dated Thursday. I sent it, I sent it, it came in the email. Sorry. It's not in your package.
Thanks.
It came in the email after the packets went out. We can make copies if you don't have it with you.
Let me get them done.
You want to make copies? We can make copies.
Does it make sense to talk about the budget and then come back to this piece, or not?
We can do that.
Seven point five?
Yeah, we could, what we could do, if it's all right, Dot's making copies for those who didn't bring this with them. We could talk about the budget and fundraising, just to get a better sense of where we are financially before moving on to discuss the concession bid. So why don't we do that, under seven five? You all have at your places a copy of the updated budget, it's called Project Costs Estimates, that John prepared, updated this afternoon.
Yes, yep.
And in it is included, so now we can just look at Bidder Two, the Bidder Two column, which is RAD, for the moment, at least. And this reflects updated fundraising dollars. If you recall, last week, Warren was here, and we talked about $739,000 raised to date. In just one week's time, an additional $115,000 was raised as exercising one of a five-pronged fundraising effort that a varied group of fundraisers has undertaken in the last week.
And is that reflected in this total?
It is. It is. The fundraising source is $855,000. So that's...
That's great.
Right.
Yeah, it's outstanding.
So I know a lot, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about Hingham Sports Partnership and their involvement in this effort, certainly fundraising, but I can tell you that it's more than just Hingham Sports Partnership that is now involved. There are a number of folks who are not involved with Hingham Sports Partnership that are now working on fundraising for this project, because they feel it's important that we get it done for the town. Warren is here. Warren has kind of taken on the lead and been the face of the fundraising effort. Warren, maybe you could come up and just give us a brief update. Warren Pelisier.
Warren Pelisier, 147 Main Street. Remind me to get put on earlier in the schedule and not after a downer and the whole discussion after. I like to be able to bring in the money and talk about the good things and then leave.
Yep.
But you make your decisions.
You're supposed to bring us back up now.
I know, so that's what we're going to try to do. So number one, I think, as Ray had said, it's not HSP. Hingham Sports Partnership has done what they can by putting together and donating $250,000 towards this project, and we're very proud to do that. But I'm speaking to you as something totally different, or someone totally different than HSP tonight. This is a, I'm a personal, I'm a citizen here, and with a group of other citizens, we are looking to fund this project, fund the delta in this project. So I spoke to you last week about a five-pronged approach that we would take, and we would first go after the previous donors, which we've done in the last week. To that end, we've raised another $115,000 in one week, which I think is incredible for their participation in this. The second part of that is that we said that we would go back and solicit the youth groups and the booster groups, and to that end, we've already got a donation in that $115,000 of $2,000. A first booster group has come through to help us out. We expect that the youth groups, as well as the rest of the booster groups, will help out as well. The other thing that we did as part of the sports partnership is that we voted on allowing the school committee access to a mailing list that has been developed by the HSP, and to that end, a letter will be going out tomorrow that really talks more about the work, fine work that Andy has put together on the seat donation program. That goes out tomorrow morning to a list that's greater than 2,000 people. I believe we've sold about 170 seats to date, and that was mainly due to the big green event that we had. That list was 190 people, so we're sending out to a list of over 2,000 people now. So we're expanding that base and that reach. The fourth part of that process is that we are hoping and praying that the grant comes in and that $50,000 moves our way from the NFL. That would be great if it does. And the final part, which we have not started the execution phases of yet, is that we've identified 28 people that we think may want to help us in this process. Some have self-identified, others have been identified by this group that has come together that does contain some people that also participated as a member, board member of the sports partnership, but others that don't. So we're encouraging you to not think about this as a sports partnership, but really as a group of concerned citizens that really will not let this delta come between us in getting what we've been looking for for over 19 years. So that's what I have to say.
That's great.
Make great progress.
Yeah. Well, thanks very much for, you know, those additional efforts. It's remarkable how quickly you can raise so much money.
Again, the donors are very, very generous people at Hingham.
And just in terms, in terms of the logistics, that money is starting to flow into John to go to the bank. In the next several days, it'll be coming in to John, so we can put it in the bank and make sure that, as well as a couple of letters of credit that we need to get from a couple of donors who are donating over time.
Thank you, Warren.
In the paper, we also had, are still accepting donations for Fields. That's going to run again.
Yep.
That will run again this week. We take any donation?
So and just, you know, obviously, just to echo what Warren said, looking at the budget, there is a delta that we're still working to close the gap on.
So if I understand this correctly here, John, so if you look in the bidder number two column, including the low bid for the concession stand, which is now, concession building, which is 674, 548, so we're short 528.
That's correct, yes.
So we have, if you look at it another way, we have about $150,000 toward the concession building. If you looked at it that way?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So we've awarded the bid, if this award goes through to bidder number two here, and all the, everything else, we've got about $150,000 to go toward the concession building, is what I see. Is that right or not?
He's going the 675 minus 525, so...
674 less 520, not exactly 150, but close.
That's assuming that you don't make any changes in the assumptions about things like the contingency, the change of orders and so on, because certainly, if you made some reduction there, it would be a small amount that would be the delta.
Yep.
And that might be, you know, something that you might want to consider. We've talked a bit about some strategies for lowering that gap in addition to fundraising, cutting costs, and certainly, I think, the one that seemed to be least popular to do immediately, hoping that we could have the whole thing as it was designed and bid, would be to change the building itself, redesign or whatever. That is a, is a strategy you could follow. On the other hand, there are a couple of things in that column above the funding line that could be your consideration to lower the gap. And so I think that, you know, each week, we said we've got a kind of a pocketful of strategies, but is this the time? How long do we want to wait before exercising any of those options, really, is your decision? But at what point do we want to say we need to move forward?
So a 5% contingency on a product, a project like this is typical or low?
It would be a typical for construction. You know, you always worry about the things that are under the ground, and in this case, we know there are a lot of problems under the ground, so in that sense, you know, you don't want to slice it away, but it is an estimate.
I thought you were probably suggesting that since Bob Garrity had left, we'd cut the legal budget.
Actually, we...
Pretty skinny.
That is, that's a real unknown, because depending upon what occurs as the result of your decision tonight, or what the other decision might have been.
Right.
We don't know that. That's a real, that's a real unknown.
And haven't we discussed value engineering as well on the concession?
Without redesign, yeah.
Without redesign.
Right. So I think there's a piece of everyone that says, "Well, let's just keep going with fundraising," and, but, you know, is it realistic that the fundraising that you're on is going to be in larger chunks, or is it going to be smaller chunks? And how long do you want to wait to move on?
So Carol, when you talk about value engineering, is there value engineering we can do to lower the price without rebidding this? Or are we talking about value engineering that would require, you know, like one thing we've discussed is removing the second floor storage. Another thing we've talked about is not having a year-round building as a, you know...
Right.
Things like that.
Eric's going to ask you a question.
Eric Royce of Gail Associates. The amount of money that we're trying to recover out of the concession building would require a degree of change to that building that would really require it to be rebid.
Assuming that we're trying to fill the whole gap that way, is that your...
Even a portion of that gap.
Even a portion of it, okay.
To take a major chunk out of that building would really require a redesign and a rebid.
And so there's cost in that, as well as time?
Yes.
Lots of time in that.
Time is the big consideration.
Eric, what if we only wanted to reduce the price by $100,000?
Even $100,000 would be a significant piece out of that bid that would require rebid.
A rebid, okay. As opposed to a change order?
As opposed to a change order. Change order, order of magnitude, you might be talking $10,000, $20,000, but if you're getting greater than that, you're really talking about a rebid.
Interesting. If you saw the photo, one of the photos I sent around was of the concession at Marshfield. It's a brick building, cost, I think, over a million dollars, but it's got a full cooking kitchen, yet they don't have any windows, they can't see the field at all.
And next to it, they've got three metal storage buildings.
Right.
Freestanding metal storage buildings.
Right, because there's no storage in the building. It's only one story, there's no storage, and just interesting in comparison.
Eric, if we rebid, what does that mean in terms of any of the permits that we have from the planning board?
Hopefully, the extent of the redesign will not require a revisiting of the permitting. My anticipation is whatever redesign we did do would be less of a scope, less of an impact, and would be more of an administrative sign-off than anything else, because you're reducing the scope, the impact of the work that we're proposing.
Okay. Thank you.
So just before you go, so how about if we looked at finishes and things like that? Is that something that the planning board would rule on?
No.
I think out of a courtesy, you'd want to go to them anyway, but I don't think that would affect their ruling one way or another.
Might be a minor plan change that could be handled at the staff level, something like that.
Administratively would be typical.
And Eric, so if we were to rebid, how, what's the period of time? And Eric, so if we were to rebid, how, what's the period of time that would take?
Well, we'd have to, the major period of time that's the unknown is figuring out what we want to take out of the building and agreeing on what the building will be in the end run.
Okay.
Once that agreement is made and we can get the plans together, it's probably a week to get the plans together and the specifications together. It's just a matter of revising what we've got already. And then it's a three-week bid period to get the sub-bidders and general bids again.
So, again, since we are subject to the bid laws, and if we wanted to do this, and let's say we came up with something, we said we would do the following things that could hopefully reduce the building by $100,000 or $150,000, some number like that, could we then put as bid alternates the items that we've taken out of there so that if, by the time the bid comes back in, if fundraising was such that we could cover the whole thing, we could do that?
Certainly could, yes.
Okay, so that wouldn't be seen as trying to go around the?
No, because you're fundamentally changing the structure of the bid in the building, so.
But you'd have to structure the bid in the order in which you would put the things back.
But I understand, but I mean, but that would be a way to potentially have the project the way we want it, and, but if we, you know, if the fundraising comes in in two or three weeks, or a month, or whatever, how long it takes for the bid to go and how soon, but alternatively not be in a position where we have to say, oh, we can't do anything.
So Dr. Gallo's point, the alternates would have to be?
In order.
In order, and you have to select them in order. So it's a matter of prioritizing.
So Eric, if this is a six-week process, say, between sitting down, deciding what we want the building to look like, getting the plans and putting them out to bid, say it's a six-week process, to what extent does that impact, so the field, we go forward with the field, and so now this building may be six weeks behind the finish of the multipurpose field. How does that impact the use of the multipurpose field?
The big coordination item between the building and the multipurpose field is all the electrical service that's going in the building right now.
Okay.
All the lighting, the irrigation, the power for the fields and the lights around the fields and the parking lot, all comes through that building right now.
Okay.
So if that, if that schedule were not to line up, just perfect, and I can't say one way or another at this point, it's probably a $20,000 to $30,000 change order to move that, those electrical facilities out of the building into some sort of all-weather cabinet.
Okay. So Eric, we don't have the schedule in front of us. The building, were the building and the field intended to start simultaneously and end simultaneously, or was there already a?
Not simultaneously, but not, not so far apart that?
Not sequentially.
Yeah. They'd have to do the general earthwork, the general, the site contractor would have to do all this general demolition and general site work to prep the site for the building contractor. And then the building contractor comes in and finishes off the site that he needs, deploys foundation and starts building up, so. There was a little bit of a lag anticipated there.
But probably not six weeks?
Probably, yeah, definitely not six weeks. And then as far as the finishes of the building go, those can, those can take their time with regard, what's the structure of the buildings there, the roofs on it, that's all they need to be able to put all those electrical utilities in there.
And then if we don't have the bathrooms, we put porta-potties up until, for an occupancy requirement?
You'd have to get a temporary C of O from the building inspector and do porta-potties before you had a real event.
And what does that run for the number of required porta-potties?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I don't think that they're a huge cost, and I think we would want to do that as a show of good faith to the plumbing board. I don't think that we'd anticipate having to put up the 20.
It's happened before.
So Eric, so the, you're saying the utilities we're talking about is electrical?
It's all about the electrical. The sanitary, the field doesn't need sanitary unless, for the bathrooms.
And so the electrical is obviously for the lights.
Right.
But it's also for the speakers and the?
Press box.
Press box and all that kind of stuff.
And everything else that serves the site.
Score boards and?
Score boards.
Eric, if you're of the mindset that we will be able to raise the money, but I think Dr. Gallo's point is, and John's point, they would like to have it, so to speak, in hand before this contract for the amenities building is signed. And their six weeks that Carol talks about, I can see a disconnect here. Is it feasible and permissible for us to proceed with an amenities building using the same footprint that we have right now? Do our footings, bring our service in, do our footings, put that, if necessary, put that electrical box in what will eventually be the utility area, and by that time, we either leave it with the footing in place, your box or whatever, your weather-type box in a spot where, which will eventually be the electrical service area, and then pray for fundraising. Would we be allowed to do that?
It's a coordination nightmare between the two contractors, number one, and number two, just the all-weather box that those utilities would go in runs about $10,000. So you can do it, but you're not going to save as much as you might think you would.
What you'd save is you'd get your, you'd get your show on the road.
But could you have a bidder who says, wait a minute, you know?
Start the job.
Yeah, we couldn't sign the contract. Who's doing the foundation? Is it the, is it the?
It's the building contractor.
It's the building contractor, so we couldn't sign the contract.
And you, yeah, you couldn't sign a contract without having that money in hand, by law.
And when you award the contract, if you did it as a build, an alternate, you have to do that at the time you accept the contract as well, right?
Correct.
You couldn't say, okay, we'll start with this, and then we'll take alternate one, and then we'll take alternate two, and so forth.
That's correct.
Although you could do that as change orders, I assume, yes, later?
Yes, and you'll pay a premium for that.
John, could we award and delay signing the contract?
I mean, it's really, without an appropriation or without knowing you have money, you really can't make an award, because, I mean, you know, here we are committing to an expenditure for which we don't have money. So there isn't any really source for it. So I would say no.
Would you ever consider having that significant electrical service in the stands, the box in the, under the A-frame, rather than in the utility closet? I know it's not what we talked about, but if we're going to put this box someplace, we got to put it someplace.
It makes sense for it to be in the corner of the site it's in, if that makes sense, the south, southwest corner of the multipurpose field, somewhere in that location. Under the bleachers could work, it's pretty tight, you've got to route a lot of your conduit.
Not a temporary fix, that's a permanent.
It would, whatever solution we come up with, I would say would be a permanent fix, because you're going to spend.
That's your change order of the $30,000.
Yeah, you're going to spend the money to place it somewhere, and then you would have to spend an additional amount of money to reroute everything.
Could you put it in the existing concession building temporarily? Or not temporarily, put it in, located in there?
The existing concession building is on the other side of the site, so you'd really pay a premium for all that extra.
Running everything.
It'd be under the track, too.
All the conduit going up there.
Okay, just.
So I think we, at least for now, need to put off awarding on the concession. John, what's the expiration date of all these bids?
The, when I did the calculation, Andy, I think June 10th. By June 10th, we need to take some action on the concession. That's the time that, you know, that would elapse the days on the chapter 149 of when you should award.
It's not 60 days?
Um, no, I think it's.
From opening?
I think it's, well, we opened what, the 22nd, so.
22nd of April.
Yeah, no, June 10th, I looked at the book. I remember, I remember the June 10th, and I looked at the book.
I'm sure you didn't just pick that number out of the air.
Great.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I had, I think I had sent an email out to the committee before telling you that, you know, what the, what the dates were, so.
Okay.
So we're good for, you know, we're good for another week, but we do have to get the project moving and know what we want, what actions we want to take.
Yeah, but even if we, even if we wait to do the existing bid on June 10th, that's a month from now, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we still have, potentially have problems getting it done in sync with the field opening, yes or no?
Well, we're not going to have them together, are we? I don't know that we would have had them exactly together anyway. They would be around the same time, but I think that's only a week after we're contemplating starting construction on the rest of it anyway, so it may not be, like, we may have a little bit of time to deal with this fundraising.
But if we, I'm very optimistic, but if we don't have the fundraising, we really can't start the main fields project without our change order in place to address the electrical issue.
You could start the fields project.
Yeah.
How much time, if the fields project is started June 3rd, and we did eventually need to do a change order for this electrical situation?
It could probably wait until mid-July and July.
Okay, that's good to know.
I would like to add, I think that if we talked about the June 10th, I mean, you know, we want to, we want to have a plan before we get there, because on June 10th, the action might be either to not accept anything and rebid the whole project, so we want, we want to be thinking about that.
And how does it work if essentially the bids get stale, we don't make an award, and you have to rebid? How does that impact the fairness of bids having been out there?
I think that what we would have to, the committee would have to reject all bids and say that they're going out to rebid the project, and then with the, the extent of the rebid would be a redesign and perhaps, you know, put in alternatives in place of some of the amenities that were built into this existing one, and all that's perfectly legal and part of the public procurement process.
If the bid changes significantly, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Wait, John, can you go back on that for a second?
Sure.
So for clarification, hypothetically, since we're in this bind here, you're saying before we were to go rebid with a smaller design, we would have to reject the bids?
I think that would be the prudent thing to do, Andy, yes.
But, I mean, so we're not allowed to go a parallel path right now, since we have a money shortage, and go ask for bids of a smaller project?
I think it's kind of disingenuous.
Okay, I was just making sure.
So it seems to me that we need to get some, not as like consensus, but at least a feeling, because if we wait till June 10th and then find out?
Yeah.
That we're still short, and then start to rebid it, now we're another six weeks or four weeks or whatever out, right?
Sure.
So now, now we're, I mean, we'd still be able to put the electrical boxes, you're saying, Andy, we'd still be able to do that in July. But I guess the question is to weigh here, and I'm not sure I have a answer or firm opinion, do we go ahead, maybe not tonight, but relatively soon, and decide we want to re, you know, we want to rebid this with some significant something taken out of it? Again, the things that have just come up is this, the second-story storage, which Bill, maybe you have numbers on that, had, was guestimating of something, probably $100,000, maybe a little more, if that second-story storage were to come out. There was this idea about the electrical or whatever that's in there to winter, or heat that's in there to winterize it, which is a $15,000, some odd dollar number?
I, I don't have any numbers offhand, because we haven't really looked at it in detail. I think every item that we look at is going to be $20,000 or $30,000. It's not going to be one item that we take out that's going to buy you the amount of savings you're looking for. It's going to be a sum of them, a bunch of different items.
So you guys that worked on, on the concession building, is all the storage in the second story, or is there storage on the first floor as well?
There's a lot of them.
Space on the first floor.
Yeah.
That hasn't really been designed. I talked to Margaret about what she, what she wants to store.
Uh-huh.
And she wants to store hundreds of various sports, the balls, from hundreds, and what she does now is she sends out uniforms, seasonal uniforms, to a place in Connecticut that cleans and stores. And, and she would like to have them be cleaned locally and stored on premise, so that's, that's the bulk of what she wants to store. In the first floor, the only thing that has to go in there is an eight-foot-by-four-foot groomer, like a large lawnmower, I can show you a picture. That's the only thing that really has to be on the first floor, and there's a garage door for its access. So there will be storage, there's space available on the first floor.
And you have your, your high jump and your pole vault pads that are going in there.
Well, there's things that can go in there.
Right. It's limited, though, on the first floor. But I think, I think, you know, now that we're starting to take baby steps forward, you know, we do have a little bit of time, like to get a sense of, in, in one week, there was another $115,000 fundraised. I'd like to see where we can be in the next, you know, couple of weeks. And then if we, if we don't, if we don't move that much further along, then we can, I think, talk about whether we want to look at some value engineering redesign that would lead to perhaps rebidding.
Okay. Sounds good. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not prepared to make any decisions today, anyway.
No.
Right.
So realistically, we had originally scheduled a meeting for next week, and that's on our regular schedule.
Yeah.
But then the week, the meeting after that would be June 10th, I think, right? Or no, June, June 3rd?
Eight, nine, 10.
If we met on the 20th, I think the next one would be June 3rd, I want to say?
I would say it's June 3rd.
I have June 3rd.
Right, so we had scheduled the 20th and the 3rd.
Yeah.
So the question is, and then Monday in between that obviously is Memorial Day, so, so the question is, do we, do we want to do something as soon as next week, or do we want to wait three weeks? At which point, we'd have a week still to, you know, in our window, that would, work from John's calculation, June 3rd would still be within the bid window, but we'd be getting close to, if we, if we did, were able to award then, we'd be close to, you know, the window of still doing the electrical and whatever. And then if we, if we weren't able to do the fundraising then, we'd be, then from June 3rd, you'd be sometime in July before you'd even be ready to award, right? If we had to rebid.
Yeah, at the earliest.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I think we almost have to, we almost have to keep next week's meeting.
We've met four straight weeks or five straight weeks.
Next week would be the sixth week.
Unless we meet the week after, the week of Memorial Day.
Yeah, we can meet another day that week.
Wednesday, maybe.
Is there, does it make any sense to say we need to meet when we know something more definitive about fundraising? Either that a week has gone by and?
Right, okay.
That's fine.
And then schedule?
And I think, because there are some things, there's a meeting scheduled, there are some things that are actually happening this week, so we may know more in the next couple of days on a couple of those things, so.
I mean, there's something to be said for, not, I shouldn't say creating a sense of urgency, because clearly there is a sense of urgency, but if, if we said, you know, hey, we're really, we're going to make a decision on May 30th, or whatever that date is, based on the information that we have available, and then people that are doing the fundraising know, hey, what we know as of May, I'm just picking that day, I don't know what the right day is, but, you know, based on what we know that day, the people would know, hey, based on we have a fundraising, we're going to make some decisions.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really want to create a sense of urgency just, just yet, even though maybe within our, within our own group, we can know what the deadlines are, but I think it's all, should we all positive vibes about fundraising, and we'll, we'll act accordingly, whatever we see. I just don't want to create some kind of?
So, if, okay, that's, no, that's, I think you're absolutely right. If we had to, if we had to meet the week of the 27th, obviously not the 27th, are there any, just, not to schedule anything, but just to get a sense, are people going to be around, is that something that we could do?
I'm traveling that week.
You're traveling that week.
It's also the week before graduation, so senior awards on Tuesday, athletic awards on Wednesday, and prom on Thursday, although prom isn't something that any of us is likely to attend. On the other hand, the awards things perhaps would be.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we, why don't we hold off on scheduling anything right now, let's just see where we are in the next?
Or to go to the end of next week as opposed to the 20th?
Yeah.
Could be another. would be another alternative.
We have something Thursday. Century Club Dinner's Thursday night.
That's the 23rd, yeah.
23rd.
Which I think a number of folks here are going to go
Yeah, but typically we have to come by eight, I mean, we can meet here or something.
Right, right. That's true. All right. So let's maybe keep something in mind for maybe later next week, not the 20th. So we won't meet the 20th?
We won't meet.
We will not meet the 20th?
Okay.
We'll give our administration a break.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll see where we are in the very, very near future. Will we get any information? We'll share it.
Neither, neither. The two points.
Yes.
Gary point and
Correct, correct.
Dr. Gallo, on my schedule, on my, do we have a, is there a piggyback meeting scheduled next Monday night, 6:30 to 7:30 for sped?
The 20th, yes.
And what is, what's that? Is that something that
It's the special ed working group, that was just the date that was intended to be a fairly brief meeting to kind of regroup, having talked to Garrett here, although it could be in, you know, the other room. It anticipated that an hour would, would, to regroup in terms of who's going to be attending what, what hearings and so on. So that can happen whether or not we meet and would be equally brief whether or not we meet.
So if it's okay, I'd like to move on from that, and I feel badly because Brenda and Janice have been here waiting very patiently, and it's getting late. So I'm going to skip ahead in the schedule a little bit, if that's all right with you. Just quickly go to number eight, which was other items not reasonably known in 48 hours. You did get an email about this grant opportunity with respect to recycling. And Brenda Black and Janice McPhillips are here. And I can never get the name of the committee right.
Well, I'm not, we're not here representing the committee.
I know, but I, I was going to mention the committee, but now I won't. But Dot, if you want to just give us the brushstrokes for the grant.
I did make copies, emailed it, but also made copies for tonight. And also Brenda sent along the template that would be a template for the kind of policy that we would be asked to produce. And Brenda is well aware of our policy guideline, so the actual policy wouldn't have to be produced until next fall. But she would be looking to be able to say that you have an intent to come up with a policy. And I get, I think Brenda, this is true, and Janice, that your real intent in being here tonight is that this is a, a big proposal, a lot of thinking. And for the committee to be able to make comments and ask questions about the proposal and exactly what it would, would mean. So I guess I have some questions.
Yeah.
Just kind of practical kinds of questions is that the, the gist of this grant is producing enough money to allow us to, you two, the grant awardees, to hire someone who could help to get this effort off the ground. So of course, as with all grants, we have the concern that suppose the grant were to be successful, we are able to put someone in place to help us do what needs to be done and give some, a push and energy and manpower to this issue. Then what happens when the grant goes away? You know, how do we, with the resources we have, manage to keep going what the person who's hired by the grant has been able to do?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I need you to come up here, just for the folks at home. And that's, that's a great point because we're asked that question
Right.
by folks that look at our budget every year, things that are funded by grant resources, how are we going to fund them in the future?
I think the idea behind a grant to help with startup of a new expanded recycling program is that it would put in the money to pay for the man hours for the startup. The ongoing part is part of the ongoing maintaining of the facility, at least from my point of view. We already have a contract to, the schools already have a contract to have waste pickup. We already have paper recycling picked up. This would eventually become a contract for organics pickup as well as rubbish, as well as any other recyclables. The, the parts that I think are hard to get going are, I mean, there are a couple of pieces to the general recycling program in the schools that needs a boost right now. Having done a brief survey of the trash dumpsters at the schools for the last few weeks to kind of feel, figure out with Paul Field whether we need as many pickups as we have, I can say that there, right now, most of the times, any dumpster you opened, we wouldn't pass the inspections for the town's new recycling regs. So we need to tighten up recycling agenda. So I think having a recycling coordinator who's going from building to building to building, working with the staff, having a policy in place, which is one of the things that this grant would require, that says this is something the school district is committed to doing. I think those things would help. I think one of our other places where right now we're not succeeding is in dealing with the booster groups and PTOs and all the other groups that rent the school facilities. We don't have a policy yet for them around recycling when they're in the building. And I can see things in the dumpsters that are clearly ten piece of boxes from some event that happened, that kind of thing. So all those things I think would actually get done by the recycling coordinator, paid for by the grant. And then once they're done, they don't need to be done again. They simply need to be continued by the ongoing process.
Well, just human nature being what it is, one of the things we found with our parking issues is that you do need to keep doing it and doing it and doing it. And so
Well, that's a good point about folks that use the facility. In addition to a policy that we would need to adopt for this in general, with respect to the field use application that you're looking at, that's something that perhaps should be added.
And it has, does have some language in there.
And the building use application.
To be in compliance with our policy that
We've been talking about that as a whole, building and field.
Yeah, because Brenda actually provided some of that language, so that, that is in there. That being said, you know, it's in the application, but we all know that barrels get full over the weekend and there isn't somebody that can empty them. And then people throw things on the ground or, or worse. So, so from our perspective, I mean, these are all great ideas and things that we all ought to care about. But operationally, manpower is going to be a big piece of what, you know, whatever we, whatever we do, if we want to keep it going.
Manpower different than the manpower that you have now in the form of
Well, for example, at the elementary level, we have one custodian during the day, and that means over the lunch period, at each of the elementary schools. And so, you know, any kinds of additional, additional efforts that we're making at the cafeteria level, or even giving priority to getting things like compost where it needs to be immediately, perhaps take a sec, takes a second place to a child who gets ill on the cafeteria floor at, at lunchtime. So, so manpower is tight anyway, particularly at the elementary level and over that lunch period. So that's a concern that we have. We have more than one person on at the secondary level, but he, but even so, they're bigger buildings, obviously, so. So
One, the, if compostable paper waste and organics food waste are collected together, the other wastes will go down significantly. Because that's the biggest chunk of what I think is, you know, if you take the paper towels in the bathrooms, again, for the waste audit that the high school did, we can definitely say that the paper towels and the milk cartons and the paper trays and the paper napkins, that is more than 50% of the school's waste right now. Once you pull paper out, as in the classrooms and recyclables. So I think, you know, part of it is just how it gets set up so that it's fairly easy for those things to be collected as part of the waste stations. I don't quite see why, it's just the same volume of waste that's being pulled out, just in two different containers instead of one.
So are you saying that, that anything that's paper, even though it may be soiled and dirty with food and so on?
Goes into the compostable paper waste. Mm-hmm. Yeah. So yeah, milk cartons, paper napkins, paper trays, the hand towels in the bathrooms.
Will that change, will that change what we're buying?
No, those are, right now, those are all compostable.
It all is compostable now.
Materials, yep.
Brenda, do those things have to be rinsed off?
Not to go to composting.
Okay.
To go to recycling, yes.
Okay.
But to go to composting, no. They simply go into containers until they get picked up.
And on the grant, so it says up to $30,000. Do you know how many grants are being proposed to be distributed? Is it 30,000? Is it 20,000? Do you have any sense?
We know that the total amount of money that DP has this year is their 1.5 million that they usually have. And this year, they have an additional 750,000 that is going specifically to developing organics capacity in the state, which means that more of the 1.5 will go to other projects. So it's actually a good year to go for a school recycling assistance project. We know that the EP is very interested in anything related to organics collections, which is why I think we would have a decent shot at getting this money. My personal thought, having heard about this last Wednesday, written it up on Friday, so talk about first thought, is that the money would be used in the first year to do the data collection that the grant would require, to tighten up the policies around other groups that use the schools, and to probably find a school to start organics collections as the trial project. And then based on that experience, plan to implement organics collections in the fall of the next year. And the grant would, could run for a 12 to 18 month period.
Okay. And so would we, would you, would have to hire another vendor to remove
Yes.
this material?
Currently, well, I mean, again, I think that by a year from now, way more of the haulers on the South Shore will be coming up with organics collections program. I know that at least one will have it in place by July of this year. By, I think, a year later, when the state
So we would have an abitibi bin and a, and a second?
Yeah. We wouldn't have to. I mean, the paper could end up going into composting if you wanted it to. But the abitibi bin right now gets picked up for free, and we get paid a very pitiful amount of money of $5 a ton. But it does get picked up for free, which is what is the real savings.
Right.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't trade that out unless abitibi went out of business. Works pretty smoothly. But what we're talking about is reducing the number of waste collections. Right now, all the schools, their dumpsters are picked up three times a week. So that's a lot of, you know, payments each time. And replacing, cutting that back and replacing it with organics pickups. And I think by the summer of 2015, there will be, if I got the right year, no, 2014, there will be multiple vendors on the South Shore.
And, and vendors that do both, perhaps, that you could deal with one vendor to do both kinds of, both kinds of pickups.
Yeah, as of the summer of 2014, institutions that produce a week, per week, more than a ton of organics waste, have to keep all of their organics waste out of the waste stream and go into composting. And so we know Stop and Shop here in town is trying to find a way to take care of that stuff. Whole Foods already does, so. There will be multiple institutions on the South Shore looking for places to
So the schools will be covered by that 2014 deadline?
No.
Or not?
The school, our schools, each one of them is too small.
Okay.
So, no, we do not need to do this by
Each individual school.
Right, yeah. We do not need to do this by the summer of 2014. We will need to do it sometime before the master plan expires, which is 2020. So we know we'll have to do it. The question, but the question is, do we want to get started on it? When is grant money to help with startup?
So in theory, I suppose, if we, if we use the grant to do the data collection and the policies and the, we're on a pilot program, and if the money ran out and we didn't, couldn't replace the money immediately, we may not be required by law to do it immediately. I'm not suggesting that would be a good idea, but we still have all the infrastructure, if you will, in place. And we could then put the money to it if we had. So it's not exactly like some of the other grants, like a smart board where you have to replace this or that, you know. But it sounds like it's something that we're going to be required to do at some point, whether it's 2017 or 18, yeah.
Right.
Dr. Gallo, you're concerned that this is going to stretch the resources of our custodians? It's going to add work for them?
Yeah, I am, I am.
And like, so like, if the kids at lunchtime, do, are they, because I haven't been in the lunchroom in a while, are there three different, like, garbage pails there that they do their?
They do separate, yeah. I mean, they, they make best efforts to separate, you know, and, and high school is very good at it. I mean, Rick Swanson really manages that program very well. But the other schools, they do make, they make attempts to make sure that there's, you know, the proper collection for plastics and for the, the other stuff. Is somebody reaching in all the time? I mean, it's, it's
Right now, right now, the waste lines are the kids take their bottles and cans of milk or, or their bottle of water or whatever. They empty the liquids out and then put the recyclable things into that recycling bin. They then scrape waste off of their trays and stack the space because that saves a tremendous amount of space in the dumpsters and requires fewer pickups. And paper bags that their lunches came in go into paper recycling. So that's what the current waste system looks like. What it would look like in the future is that those paper plates and the napkins and all the other things that are now going into trash will go into a composting bin. So basically, it'll be the same lineup, just will have larger composting, smaller trash, rather than the other way around.
And, and I can tell you, for the new middle school design, that is contemplated because we actually last week just looked at the signage package, which included signage for the cafeteria and recycling station. And there's actually a recycling station in the cafeteria. There's also a recycling station in, off the main staircase, a little bit down from when you entered the building with respect to paper and, and things of that nature. So that, that is in, in, contemplated in the design, and there's signage already, already into the, into the project to, to make it happen the appropriate way, so.
So Dr. Gallo, we already, and John, it seems like we're always already making the best efforts ba-
Well, I think by our standards we are, but if you measure against, you know, perfection, we're, we're not there. But, and we're dealing with children, so I think the issue of, of oversight is always going to be there. I think if we were dealing only with adults, you say, we train them, we train them once, they'll do the right thing for the most part. But, but we're dealing with children, and so my concerns get around all of this mandatory stuff and what's the penalty?
Right.
And, you know, what, what do our first priorities become? Are they making sure that kids are doing the recycling correctly and using manpower that could be used on something else? I mean, that may be where we have to go, but I look upon this as, not that we shouldn't do it, I just think we ought to raise all the issues and concerns. But I look at it as kind of another unfunded mandate, you know? And, and I complain a lot about other people imposing unfunded mandates, so now I'm saying, well, I want to be careful about what ones we may impose on ourselves. And, and I, I think we should look at this seriously. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but let's just know what all of the potential
And you say 30,000 for data collection. What are we
No, 30,000 is the total grant.
Right.
What I was proposing was that the, the steps of using that money would be to hire a coordinator to do the data collection in the spring. The money would get awarded at the earliest in November of this year.
Right. But I mean, when you say data, data collection, to see what are changing garbage recycling?
Part of, part of the requirement of the grant is that you track your data, that you know what your starting rate is, and you know what your ending rate is at the end of the, at the end of the grant period.
And I'm not, obviously, Brenda, you know, we're lucky to have people like you on this, but what, what, why is that important to us in terms of knowing? We're trying to recycle as best as we can. Maybe it'd be better if we can get some more of the composting. But if we shift a little bit, what does that really get us in the long run?
Gets you access to the grant money, because without it, DP is very interested in that because DP is trying to pay attention to how much capacity is there in this state to manage the waste that we're currently producing. And we know that we will outgrow the capacity that we have at landfills and incinerators before the end of the next 10 years. So that's why they're putting all of this effort into getting organics composting going.
So do we get paid, do we get paid for compostable material, or is that still we pay for
No, we pay to have it hauled, but it, it will be cheaper than hauling waste. Because waste costs a lot of money to get rid of.
Right.
Composting mainly you're paying to have it hauled. And there is a new plant that's been sited down on the Bourne area that will basically take compostable waste, generate gas from it, and generate energy from that, electricity from that. So maybe at that point, they'll actually pay for the feedstock, but I'm not, that, that's to be built in 2015.
I mean, you know, when I was, when I was at the high school, when John was nice enough to share lunch with me, I saw the high school kids doing this. It seems to me, you know, if you could do it, and it's easier, easier for me to say perhaps than get it done, but I could see at each one of the schools, you could have a recycling team at each one of the lunch sessions, and it would be their job to do that, you know? And, and it could be, it could work out really nicely. Doesn't mean it will happen, you know, snap the fingers and all of a sudden it'll go flawlessly. But, you know, it would be nice if you could get that, you know, the kids, hey, we're the big kids, we get to, you know, do the recycling thing and, you know, do all that kind of stuff.
Well, certainly, I think we have a lot better ability to do a better job and to control things in the buildings. It's really scary thinking about the outside use of not just the high school, but all of our buildings, that fields that are used. And, and we get a lot of criticism now about things being unkempt and bottles all over the place and that kind of thing. And so that's harder for us to manage as school staff. So I, I think that we would need to count on town, townwide help on that and not have that just be automatically assumed to be our responsibility because we manage the schools.
Well, except that, you know
That's, that's a big area of
In the usage policy, you In that usage policy, you know, we are planning, just like we say, if a custodian needs to come in to clean up after you, it seems to me that if we move in this direction, that you add in, if a custodian needs to come in to clean up your, your recyclables or re, or re, you know, regrouping or whatever, then we're just going to charge people back for it, I guess.
Although it isn't always people who lease the space.
Yeah.
Could be anybody.
Yeah, true, that's a good point.
Spectators and so on, so.
Oh, we do, we don't have a lot of time, we do have a little bit of time, and the grant is due the 12th of June.
Correct.
Right.
Application, so maybe this is something the policy can take up?
Yeah, I was going to recommend we meet policy next Monday, since I like weekly meetings.
And, excellent.
Can we meet at 7:30?
I can meet anytime you want, Dr. Gallow.
Because then we can do the sped thing and do a twofer.
We'll make, we'll make a new location.
And if we don't, if for some reason we don't meet before the 3rd, we'll at least be meeting on the 3rd, and we can take action at that point.
Well, the only question is.
How much lead time do you need?
As I was just going to ask.
What we need from, well, I'm not sure how the process works, but I have offered Janice and I to write a draft of the application. What would be needed from all of you is actually signatures on a commitment letter that you are.
And that's the template that you can apply.
You're agreeing to support the establishment of this kind of recycling program within the schools. And then, that, and recognizing that that will require that by the time the monies are awarded, if they're awarded to us, that there would be a policy for recycling in the schools.
So, so the policy committee next week would be to formulate a recommendation to the broader committee about moving forward on this or not? Not, not developing the policy?
And I tend to like to lead with carrots rather than sticks, but the town has already written new recycling regulations, which do apply to the schools, as they do to every residence, every municipal building, and every business here in town. And inspections of dumpsters will start this year. So I think it just would prove the schools to be working on tightening recycling so that we don't have the embarrassment of schools if they own those. So that's the piece that I think there's a reason to sort of start working on.
Well, that's a great point.
Well, thank you very much for sticking around tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so you got a couple of things on policy plate now, that's good. So let's see, let's go back to 7-6, project management and oversight. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks. Do you want me to take?
Yeah, could you please?
So, project management oversight, I've actually, over the past two weeks, actually last week, I met with two potential OPMs, project managers for the fields project. I was fortunate, one of them did provide me with some estimates of what the costs, you know, some hourly rates, basically, and I put that one from site management group in your packet, so you can take a look at it. In, in discussion with them, they were, you know, the, there's a, this is a very sizable project, there's a lot of activity going on, I mean, streets are being dug up, there's a parking lot being dug up, there's, you know, lots of drainage underground and the, and, you know, the soils are being removed, and whenever you get into the ground, you don't really know, you know, what, what you're going to find for the most part. So what I did was, I took their numbers to kind of make a better estimate on what I, what I expect the project managing cost, and that's actually shown on the project cost estimates. I, what I did was, they, they said, they thought a senior project manager would be needed for about 16 hours a week. And then, in addition to that, you know, for a period of like, you know, 10 weeks or so, when that ground's really being dug up and things are being placed under the ground, we probably want more diligent oversight. And then, you know, they had sort of suggested a clerk of the works being there almost full time for a period of, you know, of, of 10 weeks or, you know, I, I didn't put full time 40 hours, but I did put 25 hours as sort of an estimate on this, to come up with a new price for project management. The administration tech, that's the person that would do their writing and, and take care of their minutes and the other administrative stuff in order, so that they can report back to the Hingham Public Schools. So that was one vendor. I did talk to another vendor last Friday, and that vendor, I expect to get numbers from them tomorrow. They actually did send them today, but it, my email got quarantined, so I had to, I had to release it. So we released it, but the email didn't come in, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll see, you know, we'll have to get a better feel for.
Is this the IRS that did this to you, or?
No, 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 this is our own, our own.
Filtre system.
Network filtering system.
I'm sorry, John.
Yes?
Can you repeat the numbers of hours per week per the three?
So, the senior project manager, the, the rate they put was $125 an hour, 16 hours a week roughly for about 20 weeks. The clerk of the works, they had a rate of $75 an hour, and I thought maybe 25 hours a week for 10 weeks? Really, when, I mean, when things are being removed, you probably don't need a clerk of the works there, but when they start laying the pipe and the drainage and those things, we want to make sure that those are, are going correctly. Maybe we could reduce these.
Yeah, because some of that, there would be, there would be overlap there, right? I mean, we're saying that for part of those 20 weeks that the senior project manager there, we will also have a clerk of the works there, right?
There is some overlap, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
If, if you, any of you following along, those numbers are actually on the budget?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In that right-hand box.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
And then there are admin tech, admin tech rate of $45 an hour for four hours a week, and I'm saying 15. These are all averages. The bills would be based on, you know, weekly billing for the most part, and this has just given us an idea from, from one company. And as I was saying, the other company, once I get their prices, we'll see, you know, are they in about the same ballpark, and we'll get a better feel for, is this number, you know, a decent number? And then, from there, then I think we could try to talk about it and negotiate and say, hey, that's a little bit high for us, you know, what, what you can, what you can do.
So are these people suggesting that we pay them by the hour for the time they're here?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the way it works.
Even, like, on the middle school project?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. The middle school project, there is a full-time, let's just go by these.
Right.
Apples to apples. So senior project manager, that's Mary Mahoney.
Right.
Okay? So she's not onsite all the time, but there have been times when she is onsite, but then she also attends our meetings, she goes to construction meetings, she goes to, you know, various design meetings. So I think 125 is, that's her rate, too. Then clerk of the works, middle school, we have a full-time clerk of the works onsite, obviously a huge project.
Sure.
Need that. And then, you know, the other category.
Well, I guess the question I'm asking is, as somebody who's in the professional services business, when I go to, when I go to my clients, I say, look, my job is to figure out what's required, and I always quote, "A fixed price or not to exceed."
Yeah.
And so is it reasonable to go to these people and say, look, here's the project. You're familiar with doing these kind of projects, right? You know, it's a field, it's this, it's bleachers, and so forth and so on. You know, we're glad to pay you an hourly rate, but we'd like a, you know, you tell us a not to exceed that says, yeah, we'll pay you for 20 weeks of 16, 16 hours a week, but if it happens to take you 18 hours a week, you know?
Right.
Or whatever, we expect that. I don't know if that's reasonable or not, but that's what I always.
These are on average, Dennis. I would hope that they would maybe be less, because I, I mean, they could turn around and give us a high price and.
No, but Dennis's point is a good one, because for OPM services for the middle school, we do have a fixed fee, not to exceed, and then when we get monthly invoices, it's charged off at an hourly rate.
Right.
But you're right, so the overall negotiated price should be a not to exceed.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Number.
Yeah, so the not to exceed might be $70,000 or whatever.
Right, it's not just going to be a pro rata, you know, bill by the hour for whatever, we're going to have a, a set fee amount, not to exceed X, and then it gets charged off it.
Let me see if I can put this in context. You are two, you're entertaining, or you expect to entertain, you have entertained quotes from two different companies, correct?
Yes.
One is Site Management Group, Inc.
Yes.
And the other is part of your name later.
Yeah.
What, who was their comparable person when we were down at Marshfield for this job?
I wonder if that was BMG?
I, I'm not sure.
I don't know if you met them.
Well, yeah, they had an OPM for their overall building project.
Yeah, they have a Mary Mahoney on that project.
I'm talking about the field now.
Well, no, that's part of, the field is not separate. Keep in mind that Marshfield is an AI3 project, okay? So AI3 runs it, and then they have their certain engineers and designers that come in and do their bits and pieces, and then the general contractor has its, okay? And there's an OPM, and then there's the architect, and then there's the general contractor, just like we have on the middle school project. So there is an OPM on that project who is handling the whole thing, not just the fields or not just the school, because AI3 designed the fields portion of that as well. So it's all under one project.
So for example, when we redo the fields at the middle school, Ed, Mary Mahoney will be the project manager for that job, because she's already the project manager from KBA for the middle school. So they, it's connected, that field is connected with an overall building project where there is an OPM on it.
Are these people checks and balances, is that the idea, again, for, to help us?
It's like, if we could have Roger Fernandez there, full-time, he would be our owner's project manager, but the fact is that we, the town can't afford to put him there 20 hours a week. So on a project of this size, usually hire in an owner's project manager.
Yeah, it's, it's, we've gotten, it seems clear that we need more than Gail on this project, and what's left on Gail's contract that we've agreed to so far is a very small amount. They're obligated, obviously, to stay on as designer, to approve shop drawings, and to approve certain conditions as we move forward, but it's a very small amount that's left financially in the contract, and we did not elect project management services for the construction phase yet, and it was purposeful.
But Gail would like to do this, right?
I expect Gail would like to do this.
I'm surprised he left it, actually.
Well, has, has Gail's application been entertained?
We've not asked for one.
Gail, Gail had, their prices are in their contract. You know, so if you look in this, this, this Gail service is 16,590, that's for five hours a week of their time during the construction phase. Okay, you know, previously, the first number I got, I had taken some extra hours from Gail, but I hadn't put in nearly enough hours, but their rates would be up here similar, you know, around $100, $125 an hour, based on what they've already embedded in the existing contract that they gave us. They said, you know, if you want additional hours, it would be this, this much. So I, I can, in fact, you know, already look at Gail and what their rates would be when, you know, so, so essentially, they're the third project manager that's, that's in this mix, Ed. The other side of this, too, is you want to think, you know, you, do you want to have checks, some checks and balances? So they're the designer of record. Now, this would be the same as if I had more knowledge in it and I could be out there all the time, or Roger could be out there all the time. You want to have somebody knowledgeable in site management, and, you know, you're going, Gail's going to evaluate the, the specs on the turf and on the peystone and all these things that go into the ground, okay? They design them, and then they're going to evaluate them. Somebody else with a little bit of knowledge can at least make sure that that process of them evaluating these is accurate and correct. So in that sense, it's a little bit of separation of duties here by, by potentially going with a, another project manager. So once I get the third, you know, once I get PAR's estimate tomorrow, I mean, I could work up these prices, and I could put similar prices, here's PAR's prices, here's Gail's prices, and here's site management group's prices. And then we'd know the price, so we'd know where the ranges, and then we could talk and say, hey, listen, we don't think it's 16 hours, we want you to bring that down a little bit. I mean, we could, we can, we can make the numbers go down a little bit, and I think the idea of a capitated rate, you know, up to this amount based on their scale.
So, so I, I made an assumption before, that may not be a valid assumption, which was that there are people that are familiar with these kinds of projects, and that's who project manages them. These, the people that we have bidding, are they people that typically do these kind of fields projects, or are they just, you know, do they have particular expertise, you know? Like, we had this whole discussion with Ray as a general contractor versus perhaps other people that, that do this all the time. Are there people that project manage these kind of projects as opposed to the kind of people that project manage a school building project or whatever kind of project?
Yeah, site management group, they, they manage, they manage the, the grounds, or the, you know, the sites themselves, right? You know, just like the name says. And, and PAR, I mean, after talking to Andrew Shagnon, I get the feeling that they do a significant amount of this site management work as well.
Because I think we want to have somebody that has expertise in overseeing synthetic, given what we've heard tonight.
Yeah.
Synthetic field installation.
I think this, I think this outfit definitely does, the site management grouping. As far as PAR engineering, they do the civil engineering on almost all AI3 projects. So whatever projects they have that have athletic components, and there are many, they've worked on them. They haven't necessarily done the project management for them, but they've certainly been involved from an engineering standpoint.
This company right here.
No, PAR engineering.
P-A-R, right. That's the one coming tomorrow.
We're waiting for.
Are you surprised that you haven't had an application from Gail?
They have.
I already, it's already in their contract, Ed. They, they, Gail has already expressed sort of construction-related costs in their contract, but when we signed their original contract, we said, we want one through five. Six, we'll tell you later once we get funding. I didn't sign up for six, because I didn't want to sign a contract for six, because we didn't know if we were going to get this project or not.
But I think we've said.
So Gail's rates are already in there.
We've said publicly, or at least in some meetings that they've attended, that we were going to be looking for some other proposals, so I don't think it should be a surprise to them.
I mean, not being their sales coach, I'm shocked that they wouldn't be pursuing. I'm not saying I would, they would be my first choice, but I'm, I think where you're kind of coming from, why aren't they pursuing this? I think you make a good point, John, and we've had other issues that would give me some pause about it, but.
I think, I think the answer is that they, it's, the proposal's already in the contract. We chose not to elect that item thus far, and I think if we were going to elect that item, we would simply elect that item that's already in the contract that we signed with them. I think we've made it somewhat clear that we need to look elsewhere for some project management help on this project.
I would agree with that. That's where, that's why they haven't approached me, because it's already in there. We can buy as many hours of Gail as we'd like. It's already in the, it's already embedded in the contract that they've committed to, although we said, we'll give you this, these sections of this right now, and then we'll discuss the other section later.
So if, assuming we get the PAR quote the next couple of days?
Tomorrow, I know, I'll get it tomorrow.
Can look at those, yeah.
I'll definitely get it tomorrow.
So by the next time we meet, we should be in a position to talk more about this and maybe make, make, take action on it?
Yep.
Okay.
And you know what I'll do also, is I, once I get PAR's too, and get a feel for how they see the project laying out, I'll take that information and then, because Roger, Roger Fernandez, and I already discussed what's needed for this type of project, but, you know, with this, I'd like to share these proposals with Roger, and he'll help me think through, like, you know, how much in here is excess versus, you know, what's real? You know, because I'm not the engineer, but Roger will, he'll, he'll, he'll know if we can cut this at all, and he'll, or he'll know if it's reasonable.
Have we asked them, and or PAR, for references of fields projects that they have project managed, that we can check with those references to see how they feel about it?
These are, these are groups that were referred to us specifically.
I agree.
And, and they did give a brochure, so I mean, of their references.
Okay, I think we should.
So I absolutely have that.
As part of our diligence, we ought to be saying, you know, Native High School or whoever, you know, you had them, they did this, you know.
PAR we have in the middle school, so we've worked with PAR in the middle school.
Yeah, but again, I'm, I'm more concerned about, based on what we've heard, how, how many synthetic field projects have they project managed, where a synthetic turf field is part of the scope? Because we heard how many times, how, how important it is to really watch that, and you have Bill even said, you know, somebody's, I don't know where's his about, but somebody didn't watch, nine years ago, didn't watch as closely as perhaps they should have, and that's why they think they had problems now. I mean, presumably, both of them have learned from that lesson, but I think it's important.
And the greater drainage issue as well is another big piece for us of that.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, seven, seven, and seven, eight are resignations. We wish them, I'm sorry, resignation, both for retirement purposes. We wish them good luck and thank them for their service to Hingham. Seven, nine is a notification of alternative leave of absence. Seven, ten is a resignation of a van driver. So those two retirements, those are the new ones that you?
New ones last week, although there was another one this morning.
This morning, right.
From the same building.
So we already covered number eight, was there anything else that has come up in the last forty-eight hours?
No.
Wouldn't surprise me. I'll just very quickly tell you from a building committee perspective for the middle school that we did actually just authorize the second change order on the project. It was signed and sent in and submitted to the MSBA. Second change order represented just under seventy-eight thousand dollars of a number of items. The first change order, which was about two months ago or so, maybe three months ago, was about fourteen thousand dollars. Total, we're well under one percent of the total budget in terms of change orders, so in fact, the engineers on the building committee remarked that they've never seen such a low rate of change orders at a project at this stage, so.
And at more than forty percent completion, was that what Mary estimated?
Yes, yes, yes. So everything is going very well. Some of you may have seen in the news that there was an accident last week. A mason had a fall from the third story and was seriously injured, is in the hospital now, recovering from surgeries and some fractures. It was just an accident, and we are very grateful for the emergency responders who came immediately, secured the site. OSHA responded, conducted an investigation, and work went back to normal the next day.
Were they, was anybody cited by OSHA?
Other than that, the project is, is going well, actually caught back up some of the schedule that we lost with the storms, so back on schedule and under budget so far, even with the change orders. So it's going, going very well. I don't think we have any subcommittee reports, because we haven't met. Dot?
Just four very quick things in your packet, just a clarification, the calendar that you voted that last meeting is accurate in terms of beginnings and endings and vacations. However, there was a typo. If you look at the month of June, the date that's listed below the calendar had graduation on the first Saturday in June. That was a typo, clerical error. Graduation is always on the Saturday following Memorial Day. And so on the calendar that you have here, the kind of beige color, the date of the thirty-first of May for next year is the correct date.
All right.
Rather than the seventh of June, which was, or eighth of June, whatever it was, which was listed. So that was a typo, what we have corrected and sent it out. The second thing, also in your packet, there's a memo about the Department of Public Health that you know implemented some changes a year or so ago, two years ago actually now, and one of the most significant was the change in chocolate milk, another colored milk, that was to take place this summer, and this is a memo from Massachusetts Department of Public Health delaying the requirement to implement those changes this coming August because they are anticipating that the federal government is going to make changes in nutrition standards to begin with, and so anticipation of those changes, our Massachusetts Department of Public Health is delaying that. Taking effect, the milk change is taking effect in August, it'll be welcome, I think.
My kids were psyched when I told them.
There's still restrictions, but, but not as, as onerous apparently. The other piece of paper that I handed out tonight is, came our way as a result of a kind of a labor alert that we often get from attorneys with whom we do business, and this really is the first of what I think are going to be lots and lots of notices coming our way about the Affordable Care Act that is going to come into being next January. And there are three things in this memo of note that we simply have to find out more about, and if you've been following the political scene over the last several weeks, you've heard a lot about how little we really know about what is going to be coming across our desk. It's a Murphy, Hesse, Tony, Lemay letterhead, and it was in the pile of things for tonight.
Oh, up here? The pile that was on the table?
I don't think it was in the pile. It came, came to.
No, that one came to you, but.
Didn't see any in the pile, did you? You guys on there?
All right, well, we have plenty of them. Sorry.
I have mine.
But in any event, there's not a lot known about all of the possible impacts of the Affordable Care Act, but I want to point out three things here that I think we need to talk with Town Hall about and try to get at least some more information. One of the things is that one of the requirements for employees is to make employees aware of what they call health insurance marketplaces, places that one can buy affordable insurance. And originally, we were all supposed to notify our employees by March first, but last January, realizing that all the plans weren't yet in place, that implementation of the notification was moved to October one. We still, of course, don't have copies of what we're supposed to be notifying people about, but at least the, the notification was delayed. So that's one thing. The second thing is the who. Who is it that we have to notify? If you go down to the, in the second paragraph, go down to the fourth line where the sentence starts generally, so it says it generally doesn't apply to employers with less than five hundred thousand in annual volume. But moving on in that same sentence, it does apply to schools for children who are medically or physically disabled or gifted, preschools, elementary and secondary schools, and institutions of higher education, and federal, state, and local agencies. So we're clearly in there. We're not exempted because we have a, a public kind of status. And lastly, we have to notify folks even if they may be participating in health insurance plans that we offer, because presumably, the notion is there could be something that's more affordable. So we do have a burden on notification here. There's some questions about how we notify some of these groups, whose responsibility is it to notify private schools, for example, for children with special needs? You know, presumably, all of the districts which send to them could send them a notification. So there are clarifications like that, but I've also asked.
But they're, but they're not our employees, why would we have to notify them?
Well, but the question is, who should be notifying those folks?
Their employer.
And that's a question.
Yeah, their employer, right?
Right. Right, but.
And if they're contracted, if they're contractors, that's probably a, that's, that's a grayer area.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So I have asked at Town Hall that we make sure that we know what kinds of coverage we have to be providing. Are we obligated to provide something that's called this affordable, affordable care? At least in terms of the guidelines that we've seen. And so we need to deal with Mayflower, that's the, the town's provider, it's a regional group, and get more information. But it is frightening that this implementation is in January of next year, it's less than a year away, and we simply don't know a lot. And we're not the only ones, obviously, that don't know a lot. So if any of you pick up any more information about this, whatever we can garner is going to be helpful to us, but at least we do know we have to notify somebody about something as of October one of next, next year. The only other thing I want to mention is that in the agenda, the annotated agenda tonight, I say in the last sentence under seven point two, that later we'll be introducing the, the two new elementary assistant, right here, it says elementary principal candidates. No, it's the elementary assistant principals, those two new positions that we added in the budget this year. So the typo, I think I said it correctly, but the thing is written in the [inaudible].
Is that all? Anything else?
No.
And one thing I meant to mention under the forty-eight hour, but just briefly mentioned, we can take this up next time when we talk more about the Fields Project. You'll remember that when we, or mostly remember when we did the track and we had a similar subgroup working on it, we voted to authorize that group, as well as John, to deal with minor change orders to facilitate things, and that's something we might want to take up again next time when we, when we move forward with that. And with that, I don't think we need an executive session tonight. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I would so hope.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.